The Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:34 PM Tuesday, December 12th, 2017, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow. Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Mr. Sussner?
Here.
Ms. Selinger?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Chair Workman?
Here.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes, tonight we have the pleasure to be led by the Kellogg Middle School Student Council.
Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forged in stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we continue our meeting, I'm asking if there are any government students who need to have their forms signed before we continue our meeting. You're welcome to come up and take care of that. I anticipate that this meeting will be longer than an hour.
Come now.
And then you're kind of...
Please sign it.
You signed it? Oh, you guys are awesome. Thank you so much for taking care of it. In the absence of a school board clerk, I am appointing Gary Smith as interim school board clerk for this meeting.
Congrats, Gary.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
Do my best.
2.01, approval of the agenda. This is an action item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, there's one change to the agenda. Item 411, approval of revisions to the policies procedures manual has been added. And also would like to call attention at 6:15, we will stop the meeting wherever we are at to address Agenda Item 5.02.
Move approval.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Announcements and communications, 3.01, recognitions, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'd like to call Caitlin Anderson from Rochester, Hy-Vee.
I hear you.
Yes, you can. Either microphone's fine.
Okay. I'm Caitlin Anderson. I work in community relations for the four Rochester Hy-Vee stores. And we were proudly able to offer breakfast to all of the staff at the Professional Development Day on November 16th. So we served about 2,087 people. It took about 183 dozen donuts.
Wow.
About 130 gallons of coffee and over 2,000 bananas. But it was just a great opportunity for us to say thank you for everything that you do here at Rochester Public Schools. And so, we appreciate the recognition tonight, but mostly we just wanted to say thank you to all of you.
Well, we would like to thank you and Hy-Vee.
Yes.
I know our staff greatly appreciated having coffee and donuts the start of the day. So we appreciate it very much. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
At this time I'm going to have Jeff Whitney join me. And unfortunately, Mark Queasly is not able to join us. Just recently had surgery Monday, so still in the hospital. The Minnesota State High School League, in partnership with the Super Bowl 52 Host Committee, recognized Jeff Whitney, Activities Director of Mayo High School, and Mark Queasly, Activities Director for Century High School, with the Why We Play Leadership Citation Award. This significant award recognizes school athletic and activity administrators for their leadership and commitment to education-based programs in their community. Jeff and Mark received their award in a presentation on Saturday, November 25th, at the US Bank Stadium during a special on-the-field halftime program during the Class 5A championship game. So on behalf of Rochester Public Schools, we would like to congratulate Jeff and Mark. I think these guys are probably the only, if I'm really trying to find somebody that maybe puts the same kind of hours I do in, I think they may even put a few more hours than I do. So, thank you for everything you do, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
It's fitting that the donut stayed up on the screen while I was there, my normal breakfast. I'd just like to thank, and this is my 27th year at Mayo High School and have had a chance to participate in a lot of activities, events, and celebrations. And it's always nice to get honored for something, but this honor is, I think, special because I think it's something that the Minnesota State High School League is doing that is a good thing, is trying to change the culture of high school athletics. And it's an award that they're giving to people that are pushing that out to our communities across the state of Minnesota. And even nationally, they're taking this Why We Play leadership approach across the nation through a grant through the NFL. So it's a neat thing, and I hope they keep it going. And I'm very fortunate to be honored. Thank you very much for having me tonight.
3.02, Above and Beyond, Mr. Munoz.
Yep, I'm looking for it here.
On the bottom.
Okay, this is the November Above and Beyond Award winners. And as usual, I would like to read a couple examples of those who received this award. The first one is for Lance Dahl, Alton Hills Elementary School. Lance is our success coach at Alton Hills Elementary School. He works with students who need the extra academic behavioral and emotional support. Not only does he build relationships and trust with the students, he also teaches social skills that would help them solve problems through self-reflection and giving them more vocabulary to express how they feel in a positive way. The other one I'd like to share with you is Kathy Gronmeyer. Mrs. G is such a blessing to our family. She has had both of our sons. She has gone above and beyond this year to share the goodness that my son Luke brings to her class. She has such a zest for teaching. Our sons are very different, and she is an amazing teacher for both of their learning types and personalities. She really takes the time to get to know each of her students so she can best teach them. Thank you, Kathy. So let's congratulate all of the November winners.
Is Melissa going to do a drawing tonight?
Oh, yes. Thank you for allowing me.
I'm Melissa Amison. I'm this year's president for Rochester Public School Foundation, and we like to support our schools in a number of ways, but this is a particularly fun one. One of the names from the Above and Beyond winner recipients will receive a $25 gift card from a local business. So I'll have somebody draw a name for me.
The winner is Ginger Vermish, I'm sorry, Ramirsh from Edison. Thank you.
3.03, Heart of Dance, Mr. Munoz?
Yes, as our guests come to find us, I just want to quickly talk. This is a new program that we brought to the district. And also, I think I'll share with you some good news. We had, one of the teams did extremely well over the weekend. So at this time, I'm going to have Paul Ewing, Principal at Pinewood, and Matt Rusick, Riverside Central Principal. And if you could introduce everybody else, it'd be great if one of you...
Good evening, everyone. I'm Paul Ewing, Principal of Pinewood Elementary School. I have two teachers here, fifth grade teachers, Lisa Anderson and Mike Jerry. And we have Andrea, who is the co-director and creative director of Heart of the Dance program. And she's here to begin.
And just one second, we're going to have Lydia also come up here and join the group.
Lita.
She's not going to like that I said that, Lita. She was going to try to get by my scene in the audience.
I even gave her like, "Come on," and she gave me the no. And so this is perfect. So I'll introduce Lita Casper, who's our community school site facilitator at Riverside.
Andrea, we'll turn it over to you. Board members, we're going to start with a little video about the program Dancing Classrooms. And then I'll explain a little bit about the program itself, and then I'll turn it over to the local educators who have experienced it this last semester.
My name is Pierre Dulain, and I'm the proud founder of Dancing Classrooms.
The instructors who we've had have not just come to teach us dance, but they've come to teach children.
Fifth grade isn't...
Even touch each other.
I felt nervous.
Nervous to like dance with a partner.
The dances come out of the social studies curriculum.
We're going to start today working our dance from Dominican Republic.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
They learn to work as a team, and it's very beneficial for all children.
I just communicate with my peers better.
He's more into things now. Before, he was like, "Oh, I want to do this?" No. Now I'll ask him, "Let's go fishing." He'll want to go fishing. Get emotional.
After we did our show in school, we started to practice because we have a competition.
I saw so many kids. They were excellent. I mean, they were into it. They respected each other.
I feel very happy and thankful to dance with my daddy.
And it has really improved the relationship between our family.
I've really got to bond with my classmates through Dancing Classrooms.
And I actually found some people that I have a lot of stuff in common with them.
My name is John Schultz. I'm the Executive Director here at Dancing Classrooms. We're teaching them how to make connections with another human being.
So what you just saw, the scenes of the children dancing in sashes and so forth, was from the Colors of the Rainbow Team Match, which is a competition held at the end of the semester for all participating schools. And that just occurred for the schools this semester here in Minnesota on Sunday up in the Twin Cities. And you might hear a little bit about that from all these folks who were there that day. Just to clarify, Heart of Dance is a Minnesota nonprofit founded a few years ago by myself and my colleague Amber Reich-Gott Young. And I'm a 25-year professional ballroom dancer. She's a longtime amateur dancer. And we both have experienced and witnessed for ourselves the many benefits that ballroom dancing brings to people socially and emotionally and physically, and wanted to bring those to people who might not otherwise experience them. So we founded Heart of Dance. And the first program we started with was Dancing Classrooms, which is what you saw here. It was founded about 25 years ago in New York City. It was so popular that three movies have been made of it. Some of you as educators may have seen the documentary Mad Hot Ballroom that came out about 15 years ago. This is that program. And we licensed that from New York City. There are actually 30 sites now worldwide. Minnesota is the 30th and the fastest growing. And in our two and a half years of programming, we've served over 3,000 fifth and eighth graders. This semester was our first semester in Rochester and in Duluth, and we were very excited to partner with two elementary schools here, Riverside and Pinewood. They were great partners with us, and I think the students had a great experience. The thing that we really want to get across to folks is that it's not just a dance program, it is a social and emotional learning program. And we use ballroom dancing as the vehicle to teach essential life skills. The three that we really focus on in the classroom constantly are respect, elegance, and teamwork, which you heard them mention. But many other things happen along the way, too. Confidence, gender and cultural respect, conflict resolution. We hear from teachers that bullying and clickiness go down because all the students participate. None of them know how to do it. They all feel awkward, and they all have to work through it together. And the result is what you see there. So I will turn it over to some of your local educators so they can tell you what their experience was like this semester.
I'll begin. Whenever you combine movement with a purpose, you're going to get engagement. And that's what we saw at Pinewood from September to mid-November and even on Sunday when we competed at the Color of the Rainbow. So from the very beginning, students were engaged. When I see students practicing ballroom dance at recess time, I know there's something there. And that's what we saw. I'm going to turn it over to Lisa and Mike, fifth grade teachers, because, you know, when we began this, I said that, "Mike, boy, I have to ask these teachers if they're on board and right away." So...
And teachers are expected to participate. And it really was something special. Of course, we're always building community with students, but of course, we would dance both the ladies' and the gentlemen's roles, depending on who was absent. And to be in dance frame and making eye contact and smiling with students was really a special gift. I'll just share a student letter with you. If you had come to my classroom and seen this student, you know, you would have seen the eye-rolling and the slouching and certainly wouldn't have crispy chicken wings, as the instructors call it. And he just really pulled it together for our performance in the gym for our families. And I was pretty shocked when he, of all kids, wrote this letter after the performance. "Dear Mr. Munoz, thank you for giving us a chance to do ballroom dancing. I just thought the dancing program was a blast. Also, the dancing was fun and I learned a lot. At first, I was like, 'No way,' and now I love it. Thanks again, and I hope all fifth graders can do this."
And it's been just a fantastic, wonderful experience for all of our fifth graders. We were in Bloomington on Sunday for the dance competition, and I didn't realize this, but at the beginning, the dance instructor, Ms. Jessica, asked our students to go up to some other students from another school and ask them to come up and dance. So it took a lot of courage, but these are the things that they've been practicing over the past 10 weeks. I, too, wanted to read a letter from one of our students. This letter says, "Dear Mr. Munoz, thank you for the opportunity to learn ballroom dancing through Dancing Classrooms at Pinewood Elementary. I enjoyed learning all of the different dances. Also, Ms. Jessica was the best teacher to learn from because she was super enthusiastic to teach us. When I started to do dancing, I was super nervous, but once Ms. Jessica entered the room, I knew I was going to be great. Please consider letting all fifth graders at Pinewood experience this great activity." It's just a sentiment that all the students had.
In Riverside, we had roughly 75 fifth graders that participated. Lita's got a YouTube clip that the students expressed their thoughts, and we can share that with you all so you can see it because it's...
Can we have cue that up?
That would be wonderful. Our students, just like everyone else has expressed here, had some reservations. Jessica was a fabulous teacher. She was also a working stunt person, and many of our students were impressed by that just from the beginning. But really, the sense of discipline and awareness of self and respect for others, willingness to engage in conversation, eye contact are things that we make efforts to address or increase, but you need a vehicle to do that well, and this was a really wonderful vehicle for that. And to have it happen twice weekly for 10 weeks was really instrumental. Both Riverside and Pinewood went up and performed. Riverside students that went and attended and participated ended up placing second. One of our students, I was fortunate enough to then take home from school that Sunday afternoon. And, you know, again, not your typical student who'd be enthusiastic about the waltz, but he was near tears expressing that he had been told that no one had ever seen the waltz like he had done the waltz that day. So the trophy, you know, is prominently displayed in our hall, and to see kids explaining to their peers what it is. And our fourth grade, we pulled everyone together in the gymnasium to discuss and talk about it and then to demonstrate, of course, for our final production. And our student population was enthralled, and so it was really amazing. It gave some students voice, which is what they say better than I'm making efforts to do now. It gave them voice when they didn't have voice, and I think all of us are looking for those types of opportunities, so...
I can add some data points. So as a community school, we're always looking to figure out if, as a result of these opportunities, is anyone actually better off? So did we make an actual impact? And so, we did some pre and post surveys with the kids. We do know that 100% of them now have no problem actually holding out their hands and touching, you know? I mean, that's a really, for a fifth grader, social and emotional learning is a big deal. But in addition to that, we do know that 90% now say that they now realize that if I work hard, I can improve at anything I try. So we're seeing, you know, from that piece of data, we really want to see that translate into, I mean, beyond social and emotional learning, but into academics and into, you know, life skills. 85% now believe that mistakes are a part of learning. 70% say that dancing classrooms has impacted their desire to be at school, which is also a really big deal. So I can share the student voice if you'd like to hear that. This, I just have to tell you, was sort of an accident, and it was only done after the sixth lesson. How do I turn this on?
So there's still a little... Just start to play.
Oh, okay. So, even more...
Sixth lesson, now 20, so it's just early stages.
Can I need some volume here? You got it?
My favorite thing about ballroom dancing is that you get to dance with other people and you get to share a lot of the same things with the dancing instructor, and it's really funny.
Okay, my favorite thing about ballroom dancing is that if you do good, like if you do good on a new dance, you get to have music on the next time that you dance.
My favorite thing about ballroom dancing is that you get to like dance with other people and like get to know them more better than like you did knowing them before. I got to know a lot more people because it's my first year.
My favorite thing is expressing myself. Like, if I just keep it in, it's going to bug me the whole entire day, but if I let it out, I kind of feel better about myself.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
There. No.
So on dancing days, our attendance was up and our behavior referrals were down, and that's pretty good data to be reflective of.
Agreed. And we look forward to partnering with two more schools next semester and hopefully more in coming years as well. So, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
You all have some packets of information, and if you have any questions, free to answer them.
Yes? I don't really have a question, but just a comment. I felt really fortunate to observe Pinewood's presentation of the dance, and it was just amazing to see how excited the kids were and how well organized they were and all of the things that you've mentioned, all of these characteristics being incorporated into this time. So I'm, thank you so much for coming, and may you all dance a lot.
And I would like to thank the principals and teachers for being willing to try something new. When this was brought to my attention, I said, "Well, let me check." And we had some schools in mind, and I thought they'd probably be open to this, but I know it was a little extra work on your end, but we appreciate that because I think it's given some kids some really experiences they probably wouldn't have an opportunity to experience, but also, as you've mentioned, learning skills that will be with them for the rest of their lives. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you for the opportunity.
We all know you're a dancer.
Retired.
I heard that, too. I want to see that one day.
All right, thank you.
3.04, Electronic Course Catalog, Mr. Munoz?
This time I'm going to have Ms. Jane Gibson, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction.
And I have with me John Bartus, one of our teachers at C-Tech, and we're going to talk to you a little bit about the electronic course catalog. There we go.
So, as Janie mentioned, I'm John Bartus. I teach computer science at C-Tech and then at all the other high schools as well. And I'm just one of the people on the committee. There are probably 15 or 20 of us, so I wanted to explain why we're exploring the possibility of having an electronic course guide. So these are some quotes from students that we gathered. "I've never actually looked at the course guide. I just take whatever my sister took. I have no idea what the requirements are for graduation." So about, I want to say 15 people or so, volunteers have been meeting quarterly. Teachers, counselors, and admins, and several members of TSSC have met at C-Tech. And we also sent surveys to current and former students to see how they use the paper course guide in its current form and what we can do to make it better for everyone involved. We would like to make a special thank you to Tariq, Laura, Mike Johnson, and Nicole Osterhout because they have spent so much of their own time making this possible. So our immediate goals, the things that came up in the surveys, is the most important facets for students, admin, counselors, and parents, was instant access. So you can take an electronic course guide on your phone, you can take it out of your pocket, and look at whatever information you need immediately. We'd like to see a lot of higher usage. As the quote said, "A lot of people never look at the course guide. They get it handed to them, and then they just take whatever their siblings took. They don't actually look through several hundred pages to find the courses that are most interesting to them." We'd like them to have an app on their phone or on their laptop or even at school where they can just immediately go and say, "Hey, I'm interested in cooking. Let me see if I can find a cooking class. I'm interested in computer science. Let's see what I can find there." In addition, it costs almost $1,500 to print the course guide every year, and if no one's using it, that's a huge environmental and financial impact that is not worth the resources. We'd like to prepare students, obviously, for higher education where their course guides are electronic and giving them, empowering students to make more of those decisions on their own. And then, of course, with electronic course guides, you can embed a lot of content. We could have videos of what goes on in different classes. You could have pictures. We could translate the course guide into different languages, if that were possible. Again, these are sort of ideas that came out of the surveys that we gave to parents and students and teachers that we would like to see happen over the next few years. Our long-term goal, and this is shooting for the moon a little bit, is a complete online registration process. So right now, our immediate goal is to just put the course guide, list all the courses online. But what we'd really like to do is students be able to go to the registrars and have a complete pathway. So they say in freshman year, "Hey, these are the classes I'd like to take," and they can sit down with the registrar and say, "Well, these are different pathways. These are the required courses for graduation. These are the things that you're missing. Oh, you're advanced in these classes, so you can jump ahead." And you can see all this visually, immediately, in an online web application. So TSSC, as I mentioned, has taken a lot of time to put together a website that already links with real data. So this is not just a mock-up. This is actually the first step in having a real online course guide.
All right, so what we tried to do is take the parts that families and students were telling us were most important to them and what they viewed most often in the paper guide. Obviously, graduation requirements, they want to know, "What do I need to make sure that I complete?" And so you've got it right there at a single click. We've got general information, which includes things like the, what... We've got general information, which includes things like the, what, what do I need for fine arts credits? How do I get that? Because that's one of my graduation requirements. How do I get that? What about if I'm interested in getting some college credit while I'm in high school? How does that look? Where can I possibly go for that? Well, I've got advanced placement classes. Oh, that's how this works. I've got concurrent enrollment. Here are the classes that are offered within the high schools, and this is what that means. CIS, or University of Minnesota Concurrent Enrollment. Got articulated college credit, Project Lead the Way College Credit, PSEO. And it often has links that will take the students and the families to other places to get additional information. All of the tabs here are things that are typically found in our course catalog, but they're usually a small paragraph, or they may have some links, but obviously, when it's paper, it's static, so you have to put it in there. We also have the working graduation plan. As John mentioned, we want this to be a live document at some point. Right now, it's just a, a sheet that students can sit down and, and kind of map out. Where do they want to go over the course of their, their four years as a high school student? Come right back up here, takes you back to the home screen. We also have some frequently asked questions, so as we see questions that continue to come up, we can continue to add them in there. Things that we know of right now is, what is CTEC? What, what does that mean? And so we added just a quick answer to that. What are some of the different ways I can earn college credit? So we've got some answers to that. How do I get an honors diploma? So some of the things that our counselors have said, these are the types of things that we hear most often. Now, when we get down here, I choose by site, because we know not all sites run the exact same courses, although many of them run very, very similar. Not all run the exact same. So I click into the site I'm in, and then here, I can either say, "You know what? I'm an 11th grader, and I'm looking for some college credit courses right now," and so I can search it that way, and it will take me just to the list of classes that give me a college credit course. Or I can go back, and I can say, "You know what? I know that I need an English Language Arts class, and so I'm going to go into my English, and I'm going to take a look at..." And I can scroll down here fairly quickly. I've already done my English I, my English II, my English III. I'm, well, if I'm an 11th grader, I'm still looking for English III, possibly, probably, but maybe I'm a senior and I'm looking for my English IV. So look at, here are the options that I have for English IV. Huh, I wonder what the humanities is. So now I'm gonna click in, and I see the course detail. The first glance, what you can see if you're a student or a family member, you know it's a half a credit, so that means it meets for one semester. It does meet graduation requirements. This is considered an honors-level course. It's only for juniors and seniors. If it met college credit, that would show you at first glance. Here goes a year-long. Of course, I'm not finding any college credit ones on this particular page, because that's just how it works. But there we go, there's a college credit one. And it also tells you if it meets NCAA, which is important for some of our athletes as they start planning their future. So at a quick glance, it shows us that, but you always have the option to drill down and go deeper if you want. Now, when you get into some of them, like, like science, you've got the tabs right here that show you if it, so this one happens to meet your physics requirement, this one meets is the biology. So there's different tabs, different user-friendly interfaces that we hope meet the students' needs as far as they go. If you notice, wherever I'm at, if I go up to the top of the page real quickly, it takes me back to where I need to, to go. It's a real quick reference type of thing. Again, the countless hours that our team has put into this specifically, our tech team is, is amazing, and we greatly appreciate it. We think that we've just barely hit the tip of the iceberg in terms of the potential that it has for our students. As we go through the transition, we want to make sure that all students have access, so we will make sure they have access, obviously, to the electronic document. We also will have paper copies available at the sites, at the middle schools for eighth graders transitioning into ninth grade, as well as at the high schools. So they will be placed around the school in, in locations determined by the site, most likely things like the counselor's office, the media center, the main office, things like that. So any questions that you might have of John?
Mrs. Becker.
So what are the barriers for acquiring or having online registration?
One of the biggest things that we, we haven't been able to quite figure out is how to make sure that students are able to register online and still get what is required. We don't have all of the nuances in behind-the-scenes figured out, how to say, "Ah, nope, 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 you haven't met all of these requirements yet, so you can't take that class." So we're still working through some of that. Some of it's a Skyward thing that we're still continuing to work through, but my understanding is online registration was used, or electronic registration was piloted a few years ago, a number of years ago, and that was the, the biggest hurdle was the, the face-to-face sit-down and say, "Oh, no, you, you still need this class, and you have to have this class first." So as we continue to progress, we, we do believe we'll get there. We won't replace that interaction, because that's important, too, but it will streamline the system when we get to that point.
Mr. Smith.
Listen, you have a follow-up?
I'm sorry.
So when do you, so when do you expect to have this available?
The electronic guide? It will be available.
Well, the, the electronic registration.
The electronic registration, that we would maybe, I was gonna say, we're, we're maybe next school year, maybe two school years out. We'll, we'll have to kind of see how that all goes.
Okay.
Mr. Smith.
So it sounds like you get the front, the front end's all built.
Yeah.
So you're talking about the backend stuff together. I would suggest if you get stuck, I wouldn't hesitate to contact those students of ours who are in the BDPA, who, under, you know, under the competition of those guys, if they have to build the backend stuff. They could probably maybe solve some of these, help me solve some of those problems.
Or I was thinking, maybe you could have your students maybe solve some of these issues, too.
We could. There, there are some issues with student privacy that, you know, they can't be working with.
It's just the rules.
Yeah.
It's always there somewhere, isn't it?
But, but no, it's a great idea, and it's definitely the direction we're going.
Yeah. I'd like to see it before, I'd like to see it next year or not, two years, because the way you could speed it up, I'd speed that up. That's the world we're living, the kids are living in. They understand this.
One thing with a project like this that we want to be careful about is not trying to guess how people are gonna use it in advance. So with a big project like this that affects so many people, we like the idea of putting out the front end first. Let's see how people use that.
Sure.
Get feedback on that. Okay, what do users want next? And do that, instead of trying to get everything done and then find out that nobody really likes it, so.
Hopefully, they'll just say, "I want to register."
Let's hope.
Mrs. Becker. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So do other high schools, are other high schools having online registration?
Several.
We've been looking at other high schools and other districts that have online registrations and trying to pick parts that we think work really well.
Are they also integrated with Skyward?
Some are, some are not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Schlusner.
Happy to help where I can in this space.
Thank you.
You know me, that's my background.
That's awesome. Thanks for the offer.
Any other questions?
This is, this is really great, because students, obviously, are more familiar with technology, and as a former teacher, I can attest to the fact that I saw many, many of those guides left behind in the garbage and so on, so thank you for, for setting this up.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have, are they online? Okay, we have three minutes till thought exchange, so if they are ready, we could...
Let's just, why don't we just recess to get ready for that?
Okay. We'll take a brief recess at 6:13 PM.
We are reconvening at 6:15 PM, and before we continue with our conversation with, on the graduate profile discussion, we have...
Yes, if I can have, call Matt Ruzik back up, and we have a, a student who was part of the Heart of Dance program that'd like to say a couple of words, and any young man that comes in with a bow tie, we gotta listen to it.
So, thank you all for doing this. This is my friend Hassan Alston, and he's a fifth-grade student at Riverside. He's a fabulous public speaker, but he's even a better dancer, and he took time out of his evening to come and share, and Edison's kind of a hard building to find, so we're, we're really grateful that you let him do that. All right, Hassan, you're up.
Yep, that's, that's the spot.
At first, I was really nervous, then I started getting used to my partners, and I started getting comfortable with dancing. It helped me learn to be respectful to my partners. It helped me listen to my partner. If anyone messes up, learn to just keep going on and don't quit. My advice to others is to try your best, focus, and never give up.
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
5.02 graduate profile discussion. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, this time I'm going to, I think, I think we're live here. Are we, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, perfect. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you. Steve.
Great.
Where'd you go, Steve?
I'm great with talking to you, Steve. Love to talk to you.
Engagement, public engagement with your community about a graduate profile, and just developing a graduate profile with your community. So Thought Exchange is, is a software solution that essentially allows you to engage your entire community and hear what is important to them, but we...
Uh-oh.
...individuals as well, and they share their thoughts about the questions we ask. And that's, that's kind of where I like to start these presentations. Before I get into sharing the results with you, I thought I'd share some of the words that your community shared with us as we reached out to them last month. So these are thoughts that were, that were entered verbatim in the exchange, and these are some of the ideas that we'll be talking about tonight. So some of the thoughts that were shared were graduates will need to have proficient communication skills, along with higher-order thinking skills and the ability to solve, problem-solve. These are so important, because regardless of their endeavor to be successful, they need to be able to communicate, make wise decisions, and problem-solve. Another thought that we saw was, there should be more opportunities for kids to develop creative and exploratory topics. Making, inventing, building, and designing are all key skills that need to be developed at an early age. Graduates need to be able to think. They need to be challenged to consider multiple perspectives, interpret bias, and develop informed opinions. Memorizing information is easy to teach and to do, but we need to teach our students to be critical, thoughtful citizens. And finally, effective skill, effective life skills, habits, planning, studying, goal-setting, and self-reflection. These are just some of the ideas that we heard. But tonight, I'll be talking about some of the high-level results that came out of your, of your Thought Exchange last month. This is just a brief agenda that, of what I'm going to talk about tonight. So I'll give an overview of the project, what it looked like, and the questions that we asked. We'll understand some of the top thoughts that arose in the conversation in the context of the themes that, that we placed them in. We'll dig a little bit deeper into each of those themes, and then we'll talk about next steps. So before I get started, I also want to mention that I'm joined tonight by Sean McCray, who's our director of Discover, our analysis team. So she's a great resource to be able to answer questions that arise along the way.
Thanks, Stephen. Thanks for having us tonight.
All right, so without further ado, I just wanted to give an overview of the Thought Exchange that we ran last month for Rochester. It was active between November 7th and November 16th, and we asked your community two questions in the hopes of developing a graduate profile. The first was, what knowledge, skills, and experience will our graduates need to be successful in life, learning, and work? And the second question was, what questions or thoughts do you have about how we're currently preparing our graduates for success? And the Thought Exchange process has three steps. Respondents come in, and they, they review those two questions, and they share their own thoughts. Then they flow into what we call the STAR step, where they see, they actually see the thoughts that other respondents have entered in response to those questions and assign them a star rating based on what, on a scale of one to five stars, depending on how much they agree with the thought or how important they feel it is. And then our Discover step reveals what matters. That's the results step. Participants are able to see the thoughts that rise to the top of the conversation, and then we reengage with you to share what some of the high-level results were. So that's why I'm here tonight, actually. So in terms of participation last month, we saw pretty strong participation. We saw over 1,300 people participate in the exchange. They shared 2,182 thoughts, and to those thoughts, they assigned 34,874 stars. And we had a couple of objectives for this analysis, a few questions that we agreed to with your, with your leadership team that kind of formed a roadmap for our analysis. The first was, what characteristics are most important for graduates to have? And then what opportunities exist, and what is the district doing well to prepare graduates? So essentially, what our analysis team did is they went through each and every thought and assigned it to a theme, and then we've, we've displayed the, the summary of those themes here. So these are just some of the high-level ideas that arose during the conversation. Unsurprisingly, in our graduate profile conversation, student skills were one of the big topics. Experiential learning, student qualities, the qualities that students have, not the qualities of students themselves. Student support and development, curriculum and extracurriculars, classroom and learning environment, knowledge areas, and stakeholder engagement. Those are your summary themes, but I'll be diving into those in a little bit more detail. So what we wanted to do is share the top four themes that emerged for each of the two questions that we asked. And that is what I've got displayed for you right now. I just wanted to, to talk through some of those. But before I do, what we're looking at here is the percentage of all the stars that were assigned in the process that were assigned to thoughts in this particular theme. So around the idea of communication and public speaking, that idea received 10.5% of all the thoughts that were assigned during the process. But actually, this figure here is a little bit misleading, because the greatest theme that we saw, when you look at the two questions together, is that life skills and financial literacy. So that's actually where I'd like to start. So life skills and financial literacy, that theme received 10.4% of the stars that were assigned in this process. And that's actually a relatively high number. I know 10.4% might not sound like a lot, but in terms of the diversity of themes that were generated in this exchange, there was a lot of areas for people to assign stars. So it turns out that 10.4% is one of the largest figures that we saw in this exchange. And participants in the life skills and financial literacy theme expressed an interest in graduates learning about everyday challenges, such as budgeting, investing, and how to prepare to enter the workforce. And an interesting theme that we saw, or interesting result that we saw when we broke down this theme by different demographic groups, is that students actually rated this idea as more important than staff. So that's something interesting to consider, to dive into the results and, and discuss future plans. So I'll jump back up to the top here. Communication and public speaking itself is the, the thought that received the most stars when looking at the first question in isolation. So it received 10.5% of the thoughts, of the stars that were assigned during that first question step, and participants indicated that they would like graduates to have strong written and verbal communication skills to navigate diverse social and work environments. All right? And so the third largest theme that we saw in this first question was around critical thinking and analysis. It received 10% of all the stars that were assigned, and participants expressed an interest in graduates being prepared to adapt by using critical thinking and logic to analyze and make informed and productive decisions. And this is actually one of the most enthusiastic themes that we saw when looking at where participants, where students go to school, and what level they go to school, and what level parents have students in at the, at the district level. So we're all across different levels of the district. This was a very enthusiastic theme that people rated very highly. And finally, with respect to this first question, the theme of teamwork and interpersonal skills received 8.6% of the stars that were assigned and was the fourth largest in this first question. And participants in this theme expressed an interest in graduates being well-versed in, working cooperatively in diverse groups to achieve personal and team success. And this is also a very enthusiastic theme when looking across the different demographic groups. That's more or less the results from the, the first question that we asked around the graduate profile. In terms of how Rochester is preparing current students, we saw four different themes, or three different themes, and one common theme rises at the top. So the largest theme with respect to the second question of how the district is doing in preparing graduates was homework assessment and grading. And this doesn't mean that, that respondents were looking for more homework or, or anything like that. This is actually, this theme was around speaking, around the idea of teaching to the test. So participants indicated that less emphasis should be placed on standardized testing and teaching to the test and assigning homework, and more emphasis should be placed on the and teaching to the test and assigning homework, and more emphasis should be placed on providing students with a quality education that prepares them to be successful in life. So the second largest theme that we saw in this preparation question was around the idea of trades and vocational learning. So participants expressed an interest in having more non-college-bound learning data provided to ensure that students who don't plan on going to college have interest and abilities in vocation, or have interest in abilities in vocational trades, give them the chance to develop those skills for their future careers as well. Interestingly, we see the theme of life skills and financial literacy also a top theme in this second question. So this is what makes this idea the top theme that we saw overall in this exchange. So again, participants expressed an interest in just having those life skills be taught in the classroom. And yeah, once again, it was the largest theme that we saw overall. And finally, the fourth largest theme that we saw with respect to this second question was around differentiated and experiential learning, and it received 7.5% of all the stars that were assigned during the second question. And some, this is actually something that some participants identified as a strength that the district has. So these first three themes, they were offered as areas of improvement for the district. And that was more or less the sentiment that we saw around homework assessment and grading, trades and vocational learning, and life skills and financial literacy. But differentiated and experiential learning is something that the district is already doing well. Participants expressed an interest in seeing that spread and offered to, to more students. So pretty interesting themes arising from the first two questions. I just want to stop here and, and ask if there are any questions in the room, or how these results are landing with you folks.
Board members? No questions so far.
No questions, Steve.
All right, no questions so far. So we'll keep going. So you may recall that the second question that we asked was actually asking participants for their questions about how the district is doing. So what we've done here is compiled the top 10 questions that, that arose from the exchange. I've got the first five on this slide here, and I just, but I'd read through some of those quickly. The first question was, critical thinking, the application and relevance of what students are learning. Information is obviously at our fingertips. What is the next generation doing with this information? Second top question was, critical thinking skills aren't part of testing, so why are we testing so much and teaching so little? Third, citizens should have critical thinking skills, be problem solvers, use effective communication skills, and want to contribute to bettering others. Aren't those, aren't all those things important? Fourth, preparedness, what is after high school? Let's have open conversations about trades, professions, taking care of yourself and your community. And fifth, self-confidence is dependent on knowing how to care for one's own needs. Do all of our children know how to care for themselves? Learning and practicing skills of daily living, washing hands, making lunch, clearing the table, et cetera, ensures self-confidence and feeling capable. Number six question that we saw was, are we instilling boundaries and a good work ethic? Students are swamped in, are swamped in feelings of anxiety and want a fast fix for everything. Coping skills are not there. Number seven, the big ideas of lifelong learning should always drive you. What is your passion? Maybe too deep for younger students, but what is your curiosity may be better, or what makes you tick? Number eight, why are staff and courses being cut over here? Limiting opportunities in language, the arts, and extracurriculars is troubling. Number nine, whose job is it to prepare students with the soft skills they need to be successful? Are parents taking responsibility to teach core values of working hard, perseverance, growing your mind, et cetera? This needs to be shared ownership. And lastly, why do middle school and high school students start so early? Studies have shown without question that later start times lead to dramatic academic improvement. So those are just the, the top questions that arose from the exchange in terms of the ratings that they received from, from other participants. And that is, that is all the results that I wanted to walk through with you tonight. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. In terms of next steps, I encourage your district to share these results and, and celebrate them. Consider any questions you have, follow up with your community, and we will be in touch with you about planning a further engagement or follow-up. So are there any questions in the room now, just as we reach the conclusion of the presentation?
No questions.
No questions. Steve, thank you.
Terrific. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, we will, probably in a couple weeks, we're still, we'll be working with them, we'll have this information on our website. And then in January, when we have our study session with the board, we will dig a little deeper into this information as we start working to create our graduate profile for our strategic plan.
We will now return to the regular order of the agenda, and we are on 3.05, 2017-2018 School Board Committee Assignments Update. Board members. Mr. Schlusner.
Just a reminder, the Rochester Public School Foundation grant application deadline is the 15th. If you're an educator and have a great idea for something innovative and would like a few dollars to help out, go to the website and apply.
Ms. Seelinger? Do you want them all at once, or?
Why not once? We can take turns.
Okay. Let's take turns. I attended the concurrent enrollment advisory at RCTC a few weeks ago. Been meeting with them for a couple years on opportunities for our students here to take college classes through, through concurrent enrollment. Had a follow-up conversation with Janie Gibson, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. I'm very encouraged to see the work that we're doing around getting more opportunities for our students to earn college credit in high school. Concurrent enrollment is just one piece of that. We also have college in the schools. We have PSEO, we have AP courses, and we have something new. Well, it's not new. It's a new word to me. And I can't say it. Articulated, articulated. I'm learning about articulated credits. So we'll keep you posted on those efforts, but all good things for our students in RPS.
Ms. Marvin?
Thank you. In connection with the graduate profile, the School Board Community Engagement Committee will be meeting with a couple, at least a couple of different groups who may not have been as likely to do an online survey. We'll be meeting with a group of Native American parents on Thursday, and then next Sunday with a group of Somali parents. We'll have an interpreter there, and we're really interested in getting input from as many people as we can, so that our graduate profile is really well-informed.
This is an official committee, but it is, it's sort of on the CTEC Advisory Committee, and they had their first meeting here a couple weeks ago. And Brandon McCaffrey has done a good job of putting a good group of people to, together there. The group consists of representatives of a family clinic, a bunch of manufacturers in town, building trades, a cross-section of employers within the community that the curriculum at CTEC lines up with. I think this is gonna be a, a really good group to connect CTEC with the actual business community, and it's gonna be interesting to see how, how this evolves over time. But Brandon did an excellent job of, of kind of giving an overview of CTEC, where, where we were, where we are today, including how you're mapping out, you know, the curriculums, not only the stuff that's taught at CTEC, but it's part of the career pathways that are taught at JAM or, or some of the other high schools. That stuff is all being kind of consolidated so students can, can get, see, I suppose this will be in the, in the electronic guide as well, but, so they can kind of see the pathways and how they, how they line up and that. But it was the first meeting, just kind of a general overview of what's going on, so I'm very encouraged by that group and look for, for good things to come out of that relationship.
Ms. Seelinger?
I'll give you another one. I attended the family engagement meeting on Monday. Lots of good representation and sharing out. Hello to my Riverside friends out there. They got to share. Really, when I looked at the participants who were in the room, I think we covered about 10 different schools in Rochester with shareouts about things that buildings are doing to really create relationship and opportunities for our students and our families. I, you know, I, I wish we could have an audience for that meeting to share out all the good work that's going on and the effort that's going into those programs. We're looking at doing some, the district is looking at doing some professional development in the area of family engagement, which of course is one of my favorite topics. So looking forward to that and hearing more, we'll share more about that, but good work being seen at many of our schools in the district.
Yeah, just wanted to give the board a couple updates, and this is actually an idea that Deborah came up with, but something that we're really glad we're doing. Each month, a different cabinet member is attending the PTSA Area Council Meeting and presenting, I know John has already presented on the budget, and Carl has talked about HR, and so each month, we'll have a different topic that we will present at each of these meetings to provide some information for the parents that attend these meetings. And I probably should have said this earlier, we were really happy with the participation we had in our first Thought Exchange. I know we just zipped through real quickly the results. There's a lot more to the results and the analysis that they provided us, and we'll put that information up on, on the website here in a few weeks. But I think it's, it's a, a better way to engage with the community and with our stakeholders. You know, we've done various surveys, and to me, this is a, a better tool than a survey because not only are you asking questions and people can respond to this question, but you get to see what other people think about those same questions, and then you can, through the stars, you can say, yeah, I really like that idea, or no, it's not a very good idea. So it encourages engagement within the, the program itself, so we're really excited with that. We're currently doing another exchange right now with our school calendar for next year. So that opened up earlier last week, and I think it goes through this week. And then the plan is to, in January, to bring to the board a calendar for the next school year for year adoption, but we're using the Thought Exchange to get some input from our stakeholders on that as well. We'll continue to use that for district engagement, but also we have what they call premium licenses, so individual buildings or departments can use the same tool to, let's say Riverside wants to engage with their staff and parents on something, they can use this tool to do the same thing and then just use that just for their own building. So, and we're in the process of setting up a training for administrators so they know how to use the tool, but I think it's gonna be a really good tool for us to engage with our stakeholders and give them an opportunity to provide feedback and input for us moving forward.
Mrs. Becker?
I just have one comment on the Thought Exchange. I, I don't know, maybe I didn't read it like clear enough or thorough enough when I first started, because I like got into it, and then I'm like, whoa, wait a minute, this is like really different than what I thought it was. And so I don't, and I, to be honest, I don't remember if I should have been reading more ahead of time before I did it, but, I mean, it is really, it's, it's a different process than, than just a regular sample and, you know, just write what you think and then kind of move on, but I mean, it's, it's, it's more involved. So I guess I would, you know, tell the public, if you're gonna do it, it's more involved than, than what you might think at the beginning.
Yeah.
So.
Mr. Schlusner?
And not exactly a committee assignment, but I think it's worthy of noting that yesterday today, the Greater Rochester Rotary Dictionary Project that's been going out to all of the third grades in all of Rochester schools as well, so of course Rochester Public Schools. It's a great project they've got going, and I think it's worth acknowledging.
Mrs. Becker?
Then we did have the Long Range Planning Committee yesterday, and we are getting closer to, I thought we were having a, a study session planned for January to talk about, you know, potential school, no school, how we're gonna deal with, you know, the more students that we have, but it seems like we took that off, that study session off.
Actually, the last Tuesday, last Tuesday of, of January will be the study session just on facilities.
Okay.
And then the Tuesday before that, we'll do one on the graduate profile work.
Okay. Okay, that's what we're gonna combine.
January's going to be busy.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, look at the elementary school numbers, and yeah, they're full.
Any others? Ms. Seelinger?
So I'd like to report out a little bit on the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, of which we are a member, although we are not in the metro, but we are quite aligned with them in terms of size, demographics, et cetera. So they had their conference last week. I'm going to, apologies, I'm going to kind of read a lot of information. We haven't really been able to kind of discuss this and synthesize it since Superintendent was there, as well as Director Workman and three members of the cabinet. So I, I think it would be worth the conversation coming up internally, but I wanted to share this out. So the Association of Metropolitan School Districts works together for needs of students, and also they do some legislative pieces. So last year, they came together to create a initiative called Reimagine Minnesota, and they have a purpose statement, which is, "A commitment to create lasting equity and excellence in education for all students, to ensure the constitutionality, guaranteed right to an adequate education of all students by creating a comprehensive collective action plan to address integration, access, opportunity, and educational achievement." That started in March. A group of superintendents gathered to discuss the future of education and how things are changing in demographics and those areas. Our K-12 education system is the foundation for the upcoming workforce, yet our educational data and statistics show us that schools and districts need to improve all of the educational markers that serve as benchmarks of success in the current educational system. From January through May of 2017, parents, students, cultural representatives, community members, business leaders, and other education stakeholders were invited to reimagine Minnesota and conceptualize a new model of education that's designed for the success of all students. I believe they had 12 World Cafes across the metro district. I did drive, took a little road trip up to South St. Paul and participated in one just to see the process. The next part was drafting a plan. The inter-district work sessions determined the action priorities, and now we were on next steps, which is launching the system-wide work to activate a plan. Again, apologies for doing a lot of reading. They have strategies, which I will just read what the strategies are, won't go into any in-depth, but just wanted to, folks to be aware of the work that's going on at the state level that may come to play here in Rochester. Strategy A, develop, sustain, and evaluate cultural competence for teachers. Strategy B, prioritize and ensure personalized education with emphasis on acceleration versus intervention. Strategy C, develop and implement culturally inclusive standards, curriculum, and comprehensive assessment system. Strategy D, develop teacher preparation, recruitment, and retention for staff of color. Strategy E, elevate student voice and leadership and improve, ensure inclusiveness in the school culture and environment. Strategy F, eliminate disproportionality due to adult behaviors and policies, provide growth-oriented student support. Strategy G, build bridges between school and community. Strategy H, create and sustain consistent shared understanding of equity and high level of skill application for leaders at all levels. Strategy I, statewide funding that ensures equity, access, and opportunity for all students. So I don't know if we have any plans, Superintendent, but I just wanted to share that out. Know that we have work in some of those areas, but interested to see how this moves forward in Rochester and across the state.
The other thing that impressed me about this conference was there was a student panel, there was a convention of about 300 students from, from the area, and, and some of their observations. And one of the big points that really came across was, we want to be heard. Students want to be heard, and we had an opportunity to, to hear them. A lot of their concerns were also mirrored in the strategy, as the Director Seelinger just read. And the second thing was, that was very important to them, was the development of relationships with with staff members. One of the students, whose name I don't remember, I have it written down somewhere, said that the English name that she went by was Faith, and so, at the beginning of the school year, one of her instructors asked her how to pronounce her name, and she pronounced it, and he, and she said, "But you can call me Faith." And he said, "No, I don't want to call you Faith. I want to call you by the name that you have," which was not an English name, and that made a huge difference in her life, just a huge difference. And I think when we can focus on some of these little things that students share with us in terms of improving not only their education, but also their educational environment, that we are really moving along well. We have a similar kind of organization in Rochester. For those of you who are not familiar with it, it's called the Student School Board, which is a group of about, oh, how many?
Seventy, seventy-five.
Seventy or seventy-five students, grade six through 12, that meet once a month in this room. Mr. Schlusner and Mr. Barlow are on that committee this year, so we really appreciate our input from our students. So, I, Mr. Smith?
I'm just curious, just thinking, thanks for the reporting that stuff out, then I'm, you know, having questions, how does that, how do we square with what, you know, is going on up there in that discussion, then how does that relate to the thought exchange and what our, what people in our district are, you know, are telling? At which point do these kind of conversations merge? Are they compatible, or where are they compatible, are they not compatible? At some point, we've got to sort all that out. You know, I'm sure there's some things up there that, obviously, they're low-hanging fruit, that, you know, easy to tag along with what they're thinking up there, and then some of these other things that maybe, you know, our community might have a different thought about some of this stuff, as opposed to what some community in the Twin Cities might have about it.
Yeah, for me, it was affirming a lot of the work that we're doing, is right on exactly the strategies that they came up with. Not all of them, but it, I guess it just reassured that we're headed in the right direction. We still have a lot of work to do, but we're headed in the right direction as far as a lot of the strategy directions that they have in the plan, we've started doing already, so that was good. I think, you know, this is a little unique because we're not really in the, we belong to the group because they're more like us, but we're not in the metro, so it creates some challenges for us, but I think some things from that we can take and add to what we're currently doing that works here in Rochester. And, you know, one of the things that we talked about as a cabinet after that was that, and we've done something similar to this, we've had students talk to our new teachers during, there are a couple of days that we work with them before everybody else comes back to work, but we talked about having deeper conversations with our student body besides just the students that we meet with monthly as far as Student School Board, but the way they did it with this group is that they had an individual who trained the students to facilitate the conversations with students. So, I did reach out to the gentleman who provided the training and give him my business card, he didn't have a business card with him, and asked him to connect with me, and we talked about potentially having him train some of our students to facilitate these types of conversations with our student body here in Rochester, just so we get a better representation than maybe the 75 kids that we're talking to every month. And then we even talked about potentially getting a group of students to come and talk to our leadership at one of our leadership meetings about what they're experiencing in school, and maybe finding a way to get them in front of our teachers as well to, so teachers can get the perspective from students. So, we, like I said, two things, we, it was assuring to know that some of the things we're doing are right on track, and then we picked up some ideas that we think we can incorporate here in Rochester.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. All right, as promised, I'm going to share with you some of the highlights from the Minnesota School Board Association Delegate Assembly, which happened on December 1st and 2nd. For people who are not familiar with this group, which is probably just about everybody, there are elected representatives as delegates to this assembly from across the state of Minnesota. This year, there were about 114 who participated in this. School districts and the Minnesota School Board Association government wing have the opportunity to develop resolutions that they would like to be, like us to consider bringing forward to the legislature. Just a reminder that the legislature determines much of what we do, and there are a lot of constraints on us, so I will give you some of the brief highlights. It may not seem brief by the time I'm done, but I'll do my best. For those of you who have access to the agenda, these resolutions are also in Board Docs under 3.05, so you could certainly review them as you have interest or time. So, the first resolution that came before us was flexibility in spending compensatory dollars for extended time. What this means is that, right now, the dollars that we do get for extended time activities are pretty well constrained, and this resolution is asking for more local control by boards and districts because we know where the greatest opportunity for impact is. The second resolution, and this was a big one, is a request for a task force to study the special education cross-subsidy. The cross-subsidy measures the difference between special education expenditures and associated revenues. The General Education Fund covers the shortage between the revenue the district receives and the special education expenditures each year. One of the reasons we have a shortfall is because special education has never been funded by the federal government to the promise of 40 percent, it's usually around 17 or 18 percent, and we also have a shortfall for the state, from the state. In Rochester, our cross-subsidy this year is about $18 million. Last year, it was about $16 million, so this is a really big chunk of money that is not funded by the state. So, this resolution basically says we would like to have a task, have a task force to review the rising costs of mandated services and possibly have a new formula or a different one which would slow the growth of the cross-subsidy. We did have a new funding formula that took place in fiscal year 16 that has helped with The next, the next two resolutions were, did not, were not even moved to action, and that was a timeline to fully fund special education, which is covered in another resolution, and to eliminate the obligation of school districts to cover special education costs for charter schools. So, those did not even get to the floor for a vote. There was a resolution concerning gifted and talented funding. The request is that the per pupil funding would be increased to $39 per student, which, and those funds would be used for identification, academic programming, and professional development towards improved academic experiences for gifted students in Minnesota. Another resolution was to tie the, to increase the base funding formula and index it to the rate of inflation in order to protect against future increased costs. There are a lot of pros and cons to this, but the basic, the basic idea is that our funds have not kept up with the cost of inflation, and this would help a lot. The likelihood of us getting that, I think, is pretty slim, but it is out there, and it is important to representatives, to the Delegate Assembly. There was a change in the, we are requesting a ballot language change for bonding requests, and the request has to do with how the language is on the ballot itself. The school district has no control over the language that we put before voters when we're considering either a capital expenditure or an operational one. So, the change is, and I'll read the change first because I think it will make it, make more sense. "By voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting to continue the existing tax rate for building bonds that would otherwise be reduced or eliminated." So, for an example, in Rochester, and I'm sure this will come up at our study session in January from the, your committee, is this year, the purchase of the Facility Service Center will be paid off, and the 2019-2020 school year, the bonds for Century and Riverside will be paid off, as well as additions to Longfellow, Mayo, and Hawthorne, and in 2020-2021, the renovations at Mayo and Hawthorne will also be paid off. So, this would, if, depending on what comes forth from the Long Range Planning Committee and how the board decides to vote on this issue at some point, the monies that we have been spending thus far in these projects would then be available for any new project, so the tax rate would increase very little or not at all, once we get some firmer numbers for that. So, that's one that I felt was important to us in our current situation. The next resolution was to support legislation that would provide state funding for school district costs related to inaccurate state-assessed property values. This resolution would request that the state should fund the school district portion of the property taxes, tax rebates for state-assessed pipeline and utility companies. Okay, everybody's eyes have glazed over at that one, for sure. I'm not sure how it impacts Rochester particularly. I won't call on any of our cabinet members to expound on this fascinating subject at this time, but maybe at a later date. Another one was to align the world's best workforce and Every Student Succeed Act. So, the world's best workforce is the Primary State Accountability Plan, in addition to what had been NCLB but is now replaced by ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. These two systems are similar in a lot of ways, but different in some, which may be confusing to the public, so I won't expound on that too much. But currently, we have the state fund, or the state plan, as I mentioned, the Workforce Plan and the ESA Plan, which is based on our annual standardized testing, goal-setting, strategic plans, and identifying and supporting schools that need improvement. To the extent possible, we should take this opportunity to align the two systems to reduce the requirements for school districts in executing two systems instead of just one. MSBA urges the legislature to provide additional revenue and flexibility in the use of existing K-12 funding streams for school districts to invest in cybersecurity solutions in order to protect student and school district data collections and storage systems. Flexibility with a safe school revenue and the operating capital funding would allow students to start crafting and expanding their internal electronic environments. The MSBA urges the legislature to assess a reasonable charge or require the requesting person to pay a reasonable fee to inspect data when they wish to copy public data. School districts are hit pretty hard by free inspection because of the number of redactions that must be done because we deal with students under the age of 18. So, it's not just a question of getting this information to the public, but there's a lot of information that we can't release to the public, and this takes a tremendous amount of time to put together. The next one was to eliminate the voter-initiated option, allowing 50 voters to propose consolidation of two or more districts. I don't think we're in that position at this time, but in case we are, there is a resolution out there to address it. We urge the legislature to provide increased state funding for Pathway 2, early learning scholarships. This scholarship program focuses on a more diverse and at-risk student population. The early learning programs will only work if funding is stable and not continually at risk. Districts need to have the assurance that funding streams will not start and stop. We urge the legislature to fund early learning scholarships, Pathway 2, so Minnesota's neediest students can have access to high-quality preschool. Resolution number 18 did not get a vote because the proposal was to eliminate the MCA tests and replace them with the NWEA test, but I believe that would be a violation of state statute, so that one didn't go anywhere. And then finally, the school trust, MSBA is urging the legislature to ensure the school trust land director has the responsibility and authority to work on behalf of the trust beneficiaries, which are Minnesota's public school students. And we would build on the current dividend of $32 per pupil. There are some potential conflicts between the manager and the DNR, so those will be considered. So, although this is not a funding year at the legislature, it's my opinion that it's important to present resolutions that cost money, just to keep it in their field of view when they come back in 2019. That said, MSBA will not be putting forth all 12 resolutions that passed out of the 19 that were submitted, that the Delegate Assembly approved, but will select ones which they deem to be most critical. There are few resolutions which are language and/or policy or statute-related and would not require additional funding from the state. Those are Resolution 1, which asks for flexibility in spending compensatory dollars, Resolution 2, which is asking the legislature to create a task force to study the special education cross-subsidy, Resolution number 7 is the ballot language for bonding requests, Number 11 is aligning the world's best workforce and Every Student Succeeds Act, which would cost time but would not allot dollars to districts, and Resolution number 13 on inspecting and copying public data for a fee would require significant time and energy to pass this legislation, but would not require funding. And Resolution 15 on school district consolidation requires a change in statute. We've had a lot of discussions in previous years about why we can or can't do anything, or as much as we would like to because we feel constrained by the legislature, and this is certainly an opportunity for districts to put forth their recommendations and their most important issues for the MSBA to present to the legislature. On that note, the MSBA Day at the Capitol will be on Monday, March 19th, 2018, and of course, it's in St. Paul because it's at the Capitol. Are there any questions? It's time for a test. I haven't given this detailed a report probably ever, but I think the issues are important, and I think it's important for not only the board and, but also for those in the audience or others who may watch the video at some future time. Are there any other reports? Hearing none. Number four, consent agenda, this is an action item. Are there any items that school board members would like removed for a separate consideration? Hearing none?
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. High Student Achievement 5.01, the World's Best Workforce Plan update, this is an action item. This is an action item. RPS wants to lock me out of the session. Yeah, I have to read this. I have to read the resolution first. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the World's Best Workforce Plan summary as presented.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor? No. Turn it over, discussion. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, before you vote, I would like to have Jeannie Gibson, Executive Director of Elementary and Second Year Education, just give you a little bit more information on this before you take action.
The members of the board, just wanted to do a quick, call your attention to, last time that I was before you and presented the presentation on the World's Best Workforce, I did not include the template that we received from MDE that needs to be completed and returned to them, and so it represents all of the information that I spoke with you at last board meeting, but I do want to make you aware that it is now in there, and that is indeed, if you do approve it, that's what will be signed and submitted to MDE to fulfill our requirements of the World Best Workforce legislation. So just needed to make sure that you noticed when you did vote on it, that you were voting to also approve that document that will be submitted to MDE.
May I ask a question? I noticed on the template that MDE is asking us for our four-year graduation rate. Will there be any modification to this template in the future? Would you anticipate it, based on discussions that we've had with ESA on also considering five- and six-year graduation rates?
Based on what you were just reading, I think there's continual conversation on World's Best Workforce, and so it wouldn't surprise me, but I certainly don't try to read the crystal ball of what MDE will do also.
None of us do.
Well, right now, there are two separate plans, but if the resolution would happen to pass, that the School Board Association is trying to push through, then we would have to change that. But right now, it just requires us to report the four-year graduation rate.
Any other questions? Now we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 5.03, Approval for Riverside Central Elementary to Enter the Application Process for DNR Forest Designation. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to call Jackie Peterson, Executive Director of Elementary and Second Year Education, and all the other individuals that will be speaking tonight.
I'm here tonight to have a group of great Riverside folks here. Oh, sorry. We're missing one person, though, right? Okay, so Principal Matt Ruzek, Bianca, who I've known since you were in preschool, right, Bianca? Before she started kindergarten, she was hanging around Riverside with her big sister. Lita and Melanie Shaw, teacher at Riverside.
Yes.
Okay, and you were briefed on this item back in October, the DNR forest designation, and the group is here before you tonight to ask for your approval for them to apply for the grant. They have to seek and receive your approval before they can even apply. So they're here tonight to answer any questions you might have at this time. Bianca would like to read. She's got a little.
Hi, I'm Bianca, and I'm in fourth grade at Riverside, and I'm really happy to help start our school forest. We have a lot of fun, one hour each month, when the DNR comes and teaches us about science. Last time, we focused on geology with a real geologist. We learned how to identify rocks based on color and hardness. We also got to look at fossils and then be geologists ourselves. We went outside to find our own fossils right at Riverside. It was really, it was a really fun day and important, because I learned about fossils, and I not only got to hear about it, but I also got to find some myself. I brought along some of the fossils I found. We're lucky to have so many fun activities at Riverside. A school forest would make it even more fun. Thank you. These are the fossils I got. And then, when we looked at rocks inside, these, we had to see what color they were and what they matched with, and then we had to see what they were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we look and touch here fossils, or not? You want to come on up here, so we can take a look at them?
Outside by, um, outside by the lake.
By the lake. So where do I see the fossil? Do you know what kind? Did you know what kind of animal it was?
Um, no.
Okay.
So just to recap, this is really just a designation. There's no cost. Their benefits to us would be the forest or professional development for our teachers and creating other opportunities to connect with learning and standards outdoors, and of course, experts. The other thing that we really, that we love and that we're really trying to foster at Riverside is equity. By sixth grade, kids born into poverty are likely to suffer a 6,000-hour learning gap compared with their middle-class peers. And so, as a part of, as a part of this forest, we're trying to bring children opportunities that they might not otherwise have, so learning opportunities that they might not otherwise have access to, as well as connections to standards and curriculum and life skills, college career, civic readiness. And then, of course, you know, as I mentioned in our last one, the last time we were here, we don't just want to buy, we don't just want to write a grant to get an outdoor classroom. We really want to create this together with our students, with our staff, with our community partners, and just to reference Ms. Seelinger's conference, Strategy EGF and I specifically. Would you like to?
No, just as an fourth-grade teacher and educator at Rochester Public Schools, this, the School Forest Initiative would be another engaging way to connect the standards with the students and provide opportunities for students to tap into maybe a passion they have for future careers, or, you know, just for future. And we also noticed that there has been a trend, when we have these outdoor activities, that there has been a significant drop in behavior referrals, and so that just speaks volumes to how these real-life experiences have touched our students in a positive way.
Just say, too, I know you're one of the schools that has the outdoor garden going, and I think anytime you give the kids literally hands-on experiences like this, and you're connecting with other agencies in the community, experts outside our schools, that's exactly what we need, are more people coming in and helping our kids sort of tear down the walls of the school, that the world becomes their classroom. So I think this is great. Thank you.
I can see how this really ties in with the Heart of Dance. The one thing I wrote down from the Pinewood Principle was movement and purpose equal engagement. So here's another example, really good example of that for students. So I guess, any other questions or comments? Mr. Schlesner.
No issues with MDE requiring green space for an elementary school?
So we've worked directly with Mr. Sheridan and Mr. Stock as far as our space goes, and I will say, one person who's not here is Donna Griesen, who did all of the legwork, and she's a volunteer, and really, she's remarkable. We can't say enough good things about her, but she's dug back into land grants, and you'd be surprised how many times our property's been parceled and sold and farmed, and then all of these different things. And so, at this point, we have, all of those things are cleared and taken care of, and so we'll be one of the smaller forest sites in the state because of our location, but at the same time, you can see the impact it has, and so partnering with the DNR and having our students look at geology with an actual geologist from the State Department is pretty cool. So at this point, no.
One other question. Bianca, you find any diamonds or gold? Helps with operating.
We're going to not, those things are kept in the office.
As long as they stay in the office, then, that's okay. Mr. Ruzek. Ms. Seelinger?
And I would just like to point out, now you've brought two of your students before us tonight, who have lovely public speaking skills, so we can check that off, whether they got it through this program or whatever. We're thrilled to have them here and have them have an opportunity. Bianca, I want you to save that nameplate thing, so the next time you come, you'll be ready to speak to us, okay?
Nothing's going to change here. I move this item to action.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on moving this item to action? Hearing none. All those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. It is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby grant approval for Riverside Central Elementary to complete an application for a DNR grant to establish and maintain a Riverside Central School Forest and Outdoor Classroom. No approval. Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys, so much.
5.04, Approval of Community-Focused Task Force. Do I skip one?
No.
Let me try it again. 5.04, Approval of Community-Focused Team Task Force. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to invite Amy Icke, Executive Director, at Kirkman Instruction, and Kamal Wilkins, Committee, Committee, Community, Committee, whatever, he's a member of the team, and so is Catherine Davis. Community Focus Committee Member, there we go.
Easy for you to say.
Right, right.
Tongue twisters.
All right, we just need our PowerPoint up. All right, there we go. Well, good evening, board members, Superintendent Munoz. It's my pleasure to set the stage tonight for our presentation as members of the Community Focus Team. As the cabinet liaison to the group, I've had the honor of getting to know the members of this group and witnessing their deep commitment to our students, especially those who feel the impacts of marginalization in our schools and in our society as a whole. Since the Community Focus Team reset in its direction in May, they've accomplished much, in the hopes of securing your welcome as a task force of the board. You have much in common with this group: a desire for all children to learn and succeed, a commitment to a fair and equitable process of instruction, and an interest in authentic community engagement in the operations of our education system. Together, you can make a difference for our kids. Members of the board's own community engagement committee were often present at Community Focus Team meetings, serving as resources and clarifying the board's processes. However, I want you to know that all the decisions in Phase Two since May were made by votes of the community members. We sometimes sacrificed efficiency in the name of transparency, so I cannot go without thanking the community members that stayed with this phase through the foundational work. While it may not be glamorous work, it's necessary to set the team up for success. Keep in mind that this may be the first effort of its kind here, so we're breaking some new ground. Instead of having the cabinet draft the design for the group, for example, that opportunity was reserved for the group itself. This meant lots of exploration and negotiation among members of the team. What we bring tonight reflects the collective perspectives of the group as they attempt this new work. Tonight is an opportunity for the Community Focus Team to share the work of Phase Two and for the board to respond to the ideas presented, with a goal of bringing both parties closer to an agreement on how a task force like this could best contribute. We expect that you will have questions and suggestions, which we will take back to the full team. Representing the Community Focus Team tonight are Catherine Davis and Kamal Wilkins, two of the many volunteers committed to this work, and they represent the larger team, many of whom are in the audience tonight. If we could have them stand up, so you can see who else is here. Thank you all. And I'll turn it over to Kamal.
Just trying to get my son to stand up, because he's been a part of every single meeting since the beginning. Thank you, Superintendent and Directors, for allowing us to give this presentation, this briefing, on what we've accomplished thus far, and the possibility of us becoming a task force of the board. My job is to, I don't see it on the PowerPoint, but is to kind of go through how we got to the point where we are today, and then to, for all intents and purposes, describe why we believe that this is of value to the district, and kind of describe how that, to a certain extent, how we might perceive ourselves moving forward. So the Community Focus Team's path to today, Phase One was in 2016, where it was kind of initiated and born from the OCR agreement, that there would be some type of committee that associated itself with the OCR agreement and what it entailed, and it basically created, we had good following, 30-some people, but it got broken up really fast, and I think eventually it came to the board, and they made another sort of briefing to describe all the work that had been done there. I think one of the best things that came out of that first run was the Equity Specialist, was kind of born out of that initial group. Then things kind of faded away. We didn't really, the whole group kind of dissipated, and the leadership kind of didn't bring us all back together again. It felt like all that work had just kind of fluttered away. So a few community members, including myself, came to the board again to describe how important it was to continue the work with the CFT, that it was something that would be a boon for the district, and the people that were working there were great people. So we started again, and I don't know exactly dates on that, but.
It was May.
Was it May? And in that, from that time, we started working on our purpose, the structure, how it would look, and then norms, right? Some of it had to do with how we were going to relate to one another within the group, so relatively large group, with no internal leadership structure. That hadn't been created yet, so it was kind of a community group that just said, "We'd like to help the school with this, with various problems, how can we do that?" So we started creating new work areas and methods. Eventually, we came to the idea that we would have a planning team, and the logistics of how we would run our meetings through Robert's rules, and that's how we continue to run our meetings now. The planning team meets at another time to basically create agendas. That was something that was agreed upon in the group. And then, the last phase was kind of working on the charge statement, which a couple of the school board members helped us get ideas for, to push along, and just to reiterate, that transparency over efficiency, I think that a lot of it could have moved faster, but we were working so hard to save everything that was created within each meeting, to make sure that everybody felt like, as a part of the committee after the first try, we wanted to engender trust within the group, some people that had been there and some new members, and so we worked really hard to make sure that everything was transparent, whatever process that we, what we did. to make sure that everything was transparent, whatever process that we did, everybody was included on. And so, that's kinda how we got here, and now we're to the point where we have our charge statement completed, and Catherine will kinda go over that when I'm done. Oh, so, the next phase is kind of, or next thing that I'm here to talk about, is the idea of why the Board might need a task force. What purpose could we serve in this capacity? And these are just some bullet points that we came up with in the planning committee, that the Board needs community perspectives, district needs community involvement, they're kinda the same. And I think, one of the things that we just got done talking about here in your own meeting is that constant push for the district to be reaching out to the community to understand what community issues are, what our youth's issues are. There's kind of that, there's always that existing problem, how do we reattach the district and the district's mode of creating policy or new programs, and how that affects the community. And that's one of the things that this task force really promises to do, is to be an outreach And that kinda covers the other two, right, is the idea that the district needs community involvement and CFT can increase engagement. A lot of our ideas, a lot of the ideas that have been talked about are about creating more community engagement, that this committee would be, would provide a lot of resources for the community, whether it be meetings at schools, whether that be meetings in external places, whether it's churches or community organizations. These are the kind of things that we would be able to get community involvement, community voice, right? And then ultimately, that we would work in concert with the Board, right, that this is something that should be available for, to work as cohorts, collaborative. So, in light of that, I could, a lot of you know me, I could talk all night, so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with what I wrote, so...
Kamau, Kamau, I already took all night, so...
No, I really could, you guys would be mad. So, I'll go with what I wrote, and it's an effort to kinda describe how, I believe we all perceive the Community Focus Team, the CFT, working in concert with the district. So, what the Community Focus Team knows is that, to be effective, our partnership with the district needed to engage a thoughtful, a thoughtful process to define a vision and clear goals. The Community Focus Team needed to have effective governance and management structures to ensure that it operated efficiently and was responsive to the community and district needs moving forward. We believe we have accomplished that. The Community Focus Team will draw from a broad range of perspectives and expertise, from inside the schools as well as from other organizations and individuals within the community. The Community Focus Team plans to connect, coordinate, and leverage resources from a variety of sources to continue their work in coordination and in support of the Rochester School District by building and maintaining effective community engagement. We realize that partnership requires dedicated time and ongoing attention to the collaborative process, so the CFT has established a clear organizational structure. We have agreed upon the roles that individual members will play and ensure that all members understand and accept the responsibilities of those roles. We have developed and continue to develop a clear vision of working collaboratively with the district to achieve the results we all want to see for our children, youth, families, and our community. Our partnership will successfully engage a broad base of a range of individuals and organizations representing the school and the community. The CFT will be involved in activities to create awareness about and increase support for our youth students and community while helping find solutions. We plan to engage the community to root out new ideas and solutions to issues facing marginalized children from a broad scope of experiences. Effective schools provide at-risk students with a community of support that encourages school membership and educational engagement. In many communities, partnerships between schools and other community organizations and agencies are helping to create supports that enable children and youth to learn and succeed and help families and communities to thrive. These partnerships bring together diverse individuals and groups, including principals, teachers, school superintendents, school boards, community-based organizations, youth development organizations, health and human service agencies, parents, and other community leaders, to expand opportunities for childrens, children, family, and communities. When it comes to advocacy and raising awareness for our marginalized students, the Community Focus Team is a win for the district. It empowers a group of driven and incredibly gifted community leaders and stakeholders to develop alternatives and solutions for the general welfare of all students and district staff. It draws from the power of true community engagement as their charter to help root out systemic or individual problems and then suggest creative ways of helping the district to connect with its youth and community. This is an outreach program, one that functions to advocate for our racially diverse and culturally diverse school populations, one that in union with the district allows for measuring progress and results. Above all else, the Community Focus Team is built to provide a voice for our marginalized students and community members. It promises to engage the district in our shared core values of education and stewardship to the community.
Thank you, Kamau. As you can see, as we look at our contributors to the Phase Two of the work, we have had a lot of people involved. We continue to invite people. Our whole philosophy has been an open door, open table, so anyone who wants to be involved is included in that, and as we move into the next phase of our work here, we will continue to recruit the voices that we feel and that we all know need to be at the table. As we look at some of the identified areas of work the CFT has come up with, throughout our process, again, we have really engaged the CFT in asking the question, is how are we going to do this? And internally, this has become known as the "How" statements, and, because it came from this question of how are we going to make our purpose statement a reality? As we were looking at all of the different ideas that came forward and that were still percolating on, we decided they really fell into four different areas. So, with process, we're really looking at creating a process that's gonna be transparent and continue the momentum that is already going, related to discipline disparity within the school district. Conversation, as Kamau and Heidi and Amy have both mentioned, it's very important for us to engage all community members that wanna be involved with this in conversations and to bring that information back to the School Board and to the district. District accountability, we wanna be able to share best practices and also to ask for the status and results of the different initiatives that are going on. We know PBIS is going on, on for culturally sensitive teaching in classrooms, and we wanna make sure that we're part of that discussion and finding out what kind of impact that is making. And then finally, evaluation, we wanna identify some potential areas through data analysis, both qualitative and quantitative data analysis. So, as we looked at, as we looked at our "How" statements and our purpose statements, it was very easy for us to actually create the charge statement. As we've approached everything within the CFT, this was done with the engagement and transparency of the group. We laid the groundwork in our October meeting. We decided that we were gonna gather input using technology, in this case, at Google Doc. Those who were not familiar with the Google Doc, of course, were able to provide input in other ways. We compiled that information, which means that we just combined it as it was given to us, sent back out to our CFT members five days prior to our November meeting. At our November meeting, we broke people up into groups, they synthesized that information, and then everybody was afforded the opportunity to comment on the synthesized statements that came forward. We came up with a rough draft, we looked at it one more time, and then approved the document that is before you. Some highlights from our charge statement, as you can see from the purpose and scope of responsibility, it's important for us to engage all school district stakeholders in conversations related to racism and its effect on equity and disparity for marginalized students populations. We really wanna raise awareness, we wanna advocate for improved environments that's gonna reduce those disparities and inequities and foster student success, and that student success has really been at the core of everything that we want to do. We see our authority as providing advice as counsel to the school and School Board based on our work. Communication linkages, we just wanted to be upfront about how we feel we will be communicating to the stakeholders and to the district, and as well as what we are hoping the school district will communicate with us. Our product and desired results, again, community involvement and awareness is really the key to our work, so we really wanna promote and improve that understanding and awareness of what racism is and its effect on our students, with really with the hope to empower community stakeholders to help the district close the achievement gap, improve graduation rates, and eliminate that discipline disparity. At minimum, we'd like to provide updates to the Board twice during the academic year, but hopefully even more as our work gets going. And in our resources, you know, in order to make good decisions and data-informed decisions, access to data and information is vital to our success, so we provided a list of some of the information that we would like to be able to have for us, to be able to do our work. And in addition, the request use of district facilities and other resources for meetings and communications would be appreciated as well. And of course, we want no barriers to participation. We want this to be open to anyone who is interested and wants to be engaged in this important work. So, with that, we thank you for the opportunity to present to you today and for to continue this very important work, and we welcome any questions that you may have.
Ms. Selinger. Thank you. Thank you for being here and presenting. I'm sorry, I'm looking for a document I just opened that I now can't find. I know it can be a little intimidating, but if the kids, if the kids could do it, you could do it, right?
Right.
Just wanna remind the Board, kind of, a little bit of procedural stuff, how we got here. We did start with the 2.0 version. We did talk about the ways in which these folks could come together, and we looked at Policy 213.01, which is our Community Advisory Committee Policy. This is part of our policy of the Board, and felt like after some discussion, small group, that really the best way for this group to move forward, the option would be to be a task force, which is a temporary group appointed to study a specific program or area in the school district. We have two other kinds of committees available, but this group didn't quite fit into those categories, so that was where the idea of a task force came from. And then the appointment of the committee and what the folks have brought forward to you tonight with the eight different items of purpose, scope, et cetera, those also come directly out of policy. So, just kinda wanted to set the stage a little bit for my fellow Board members, that this is where the work that we're seeing tonight kind of is rising to the level that we see at the Board. Mr. Schlesner.
Could you clarify how they would not fit into a more permanent group? This is not something I personally like to see as temporary. I'd like to see it as a permanent on a normal basis.
May I?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. So, under our policy, which was last adopted in May 2006, I don't know when it's on the review schedule, we have, the definitions for our committees are Advisory Council, which is a committee required by statute, and then a committee, the next section is a committee, group of people assigned to study and/or advise on a specific program or area in the school district, meets on an ongoing basis or in some cases as needed. These committees are included but are not, these committees include but are not limited to Financial Projections Committee, Insurance Trust Committee, Nutrition Advisory Committee, Enrollment Management Advisory Committee, Integration Committee, District Diversity Committee, Parent-Family Involvement Committee, Integration Committee, Resource Evaluation Committee, District Assessment Committee. And so, I don't know where those standing committees are right now or how they got to be, perhaps they were task force at one time, but in light of our discussions, we felt that this best started as a task force.
May I ask a question about process then? Was this, what Deborah just said, in terms of becoming a task force, did that come out of discussion from your group? Yeah, absolutely, it did. It was one of the first questions that we talked about as a group, should we be an independent group or should we be a task force of the School Board? And we felt that connection to the school district and the School Board was vital.
Okay.
Thank you for that. I agree with that, and I guess your Director Schlesner comment too, I think maybe starting out as a task force is okay, but I think given the subject matter and, you know, the fact that we've got how many people who are willing to volunteer their time to bring their time, talent, and resources to help us deal with, navigate, you know, these issues are complex issues, and, you know, having a group that, you know, to focus that and advise, personally, I welcome that, and I think it's something that we ought to, go ahead and get moving, just take the next step and keep it going.
I think, I think in policy, it states a task force is only for one year, at which point it can be revisited, is that correct?
It just says temporary.
Oh, it just says temporary, okay. I certainly don't see this work ever being done. You know, it's constant, it's ongoing, it's going to evolve as time moves on, as we come to some solutions to improve our education for all of our students, but especially those who are in the achievement gap and because of some of the racial disparities that occur. So, I have a question, if you could look at your proposed Board Task Force Charge Statement. On the scope of responsibility, it says CFT will be fully informed and engaged. Could you maybe expand on what you mean by fully informed and engaged?
You know, I guess with the following statement, I think it's a promise for us to also be educated, right, that it's also, it's our responsibility to make sure that we find people that have expertise in a particular area, and we've managed to do that, and just really by luck without, you know, doing a lot of work to increase numbers. While we're going through this process, we didn't work real hard at increasing our numbers, because more numbers at that point would have made the process probably slow down. There's still a lot of resources in this community that we haven't necessarily approached, but I think that's, I think that's kind of what the group meant by that, is that we have a responsibility also to make sure that we're constantly looking for new information, new possibilities, new solutions, and if that means getting a new member or training ourselves, and that's been something that we've talked about as a group quite a bit, about attending trainings ourselves, but I think that's what that means.
I see you nodding.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask if you have anything to add to that, but...
Yeah, I would say, I would absolutely agree with what Kamau said, and even just to take it a little bit further, to make sure that we're understanding everything that the district is doing as well, so we can make sure that we are enhancing that work and adding to that work and not duplicating it.
Ms. Martin.
Your focus, I think, on working in concert with the Board and collaborating with the district, I think is really important too, and, you know, especially, basically, members of the Community Engagement Team have been, Community Engagement Committee have been involved, and for me, that's really an important collaboration, because that way, you know, we're complementing each other's efforts rather than trying to replace them. So, I think the more that we can communicate and learn, as you said, about what's going on already in the school district, you know, finding out what else, what other possibilities exist, especially out in the community, that's really great. I know at this point, the exact way the committee is gonna operate in terms of exactly what it's gonna do is not set in stone as yet, but I will tell you that when the Community Engagement Committee was initiated, we didn't have that exact timeline either, and we've been sort of discovering what's needed as we go. So, I hope we can continue that, working together.
Mr. Schlesner.
Yeah, I guess I just, you know, I just see this as kind of a continued evolution of where we, where we've come from on this, you know, particularly on this issue, because, you know, we all remember when this, you know, first came out, you know, a lot of people are concerned, rightfully so, about this, wanting information, didn't have the information, you know, and I see this, I see what the result is that's come out of this quite often, is one of the things that's great about this community, that when there's a problem, then we recognize the problem. This community doesn't duck its head or tuck its tail and say, "This is a serious issue. We've gotta confront it, we've gotta deal with it."
We've got to confront it, we've got to deal with it, and we've got to learn, we've got to educate ourselves, and we've got to do the right thing for the kids. And to me, what I see here before has been from where we stood from that time, that first meeting, where there was a lot of emotion in that meeting, more emotion probably, because at that time, that's all we really had, because we didn't have a lot of understanding about what the report was or what it is and what leads to all that stuff. We probably, in a lot of cases, we still don't. But the fact that, you know, these people kind of coalesced around and with the Community Engagement Team, you guys were able to put, you know, forge these relationships and do this, to me, this is just part of a natural evolution of what we need to do to address the issues that lie before us. So I think having a link to the board is a good thing. And it can be a, it can be a one-year thing, and we up it every year, and then as we revise, we might be an impetus force to revise that policy and decide, because there might be some committees on there that we don't even have a lot of, a lot of anything going on anymore.
I was just going to suggest that, actually.
Yeah, so I think so we might want to, we might want to do that. I don't know if we want to do that in, before we approve, I don't know if we need to do that, but I think we can build in the policy. But I want to thank you first and foremost for all the time, energy and effort that you've all have put into, you know, creating this. And that's what Community Engagement, Community Involvement is, and thank you for stepping forward.
Well, certainly, there was so much work put into creating this, your initial charge statement here, and I think you've really hit on some really important points. So it's always much more difficult to write and create a document than it is to edit it. It's much easier to edit it or to ask questions. So I found myself reading this, and I'm making these notes about, well, how about this and how would you do that? And after about maybe half an hour, 45 minutes, I realized I was so far into the weeds that if I died, it would take somebody 100 years to find my body. So, and I understand that the how pieces are really what your next purpose is in terms of how you're going to implement it. So certainly, as a board member, I would more than welcome your suggestions on how you're going to do it, and if you need help from the board in suggestions on how to do that, I'm sure there will be, you know, some folks who would be able to come forth with that as well. But this is a, this is a real great start, and I know that it did take a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of work, and I really appreciate it. So thank you. Look forward to partnering with you.
I just wanted to ask some clarifying questions or have you say more, a little bit about questions others may have about things like under four communication languages. Say more about using the social media website, things like that, and kind of say more about how that discussion came up and what the intent of that was, if you could, please.
You can take it.
So I think we were just trying to identify all the different ways that we would want to communicate with the community and with the stakeholders. So whether it be requesting access to communicate using Peachjar, having a place on the district website that was available to everyone to use any sort of social media, for example, setting up a Facebook page or something like that. We just really wanted to provide as many avenues as possible to communicate with the community, be up, the community about the work that was happening and provide them an opportunity to make sure that they could connect with us, especially if they weren't able to physically be at the meetings.
Do you have any idea as to what kinds of things you might want to post on the website?
I think, well, you know, we actually have a fantastic repository that Amy has set up for us that has the entire history of Phase Two for us, all of the meeting notes, anything, any of the flip chart work that we have done, absolutely everything is there. And that would be an example of what we would want to make sure was out there and accessible so anybody could look at what is happening and that timeline. And it also is important for us that nothing got lost as well.
And I would say too, I would add to that is the idea that, you know, community engagement takes being involved in some of these, you know, social media, having access to that. And so I imagine that we'll be doing events and stuff like that, where there'll be pictures and media that we can share, and whether that's a guest speaker or something along those lines, or whether it's a fun event with kids or something like that, which has been something that we've talked a great deal about to get their perspectives of what's going on in school. There'd be stuff that we could share with the general public and the community via websites or whatever.
I think a thought exchange would be interesting to see how that goes.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess I have a few, since I'm the one that's probably going to have to provide a lot of this information. On Section Four Communication Linkage, just could you explain a little bit about the district providing directly to the task force updates on OCR, excuse me, discipline, and I guess more, what are you looking for on discipline and equity issues and programs and policies and outcomes? I guess I would need a little more explanation on what you mean by that.
Do you want me to take that? You know, I think that one of the things is that sometimes it's difficult to find the information on our website, whether it's the discipline disparity issues or whatever it is. Basically, we just want access to the same stuff that would be put on for public display. It's not, you know, asking for kids' social security numbers or anything like, nothing absurd, but just, you know, the same information that would be available publicly, just that we would have some type of pipeline or communication where instead of searching for this stuff, there would be something that we could just have access to. I think that's basically what the group has been discussing when it comes to data linkages or, you know. I guess the other idea is like if there are programs or policies that are being set forth that might have an effect on particular issues, say racism in a particular school, if we're going to institute something like Avid or Envoy, that that would be something that the community focus team might be informed as to, we're going to give this a shot, this is why, and then we could help analyze whether or not that's best practice or, but I think that's what, I think that's what the group is talking about.
Just a little clarification. So if we're providing a professional development, do you want to determine if it's best practice? To determine if we should offer, did I misunderstand you or?
What's that now?
You said something about professional development that we're offering, and then determine if it's best practice? Is that, did I hear you correctly?
Well, to see results, right? I mean, the task force would be looking at...
I misunderstood you. I thought you, before we were bringing Shrocky Holly, we'd have to ask you guys, can we bring Shrocky Holly?
No, you're not looking for...
Remember, this is just an advisory committee.
Well, I guess, I just, what, to be honest, what's really concerned, most of what's there is public information. Board policies are in board docs, anybody in the community can look at those. Our discipline data is on our website. If you go to our equity section on our website, it's in there, by school, by race, all OCR report or updates posted on the website. So all of that's, I don't have a problem with that because that's public, it's there already. I just have a little concern about what you mean by equity issues. What do you, I guess I just need a little understanding on that, what that means for sure.
So we're talking about marginalized students, we're talking about racism in our schools. I mean, the reason that the OCR report was why we, why they were here, why they were investigating, why we entered an agreement with them, that's an equity issue. Whether or not kids are being treated equitably, right, is basically, I think, what we mean and that the task force would be trying to find those, you know, graduation rates, right, discipline disparities. Those kind of equity issues would be something that we would want to make sure that we were analyzing, trying to find the gap stop, right? And that's what we mean by equity issue.
Okay, yeah, because I, I mean, everything you mentioned, we present to the board. So anything we present to the board is public information. I guess I, when I read that, my thinking was if there's a specific student incident that happens that could fall in that category, obviously, you know, we can't share that with you because that's private data, but okay, so that makes sense to me.
Can I, may I?
Yes, you may.
I think that it helps us to remember, those of us who weren't in the room, we'll just share that, you know, this was a very, I can't think of the word, big process, right? So there was a lot of conversation and tried not to get too much in the wordsmithing kind of aspect, because when you've got 30 people, it gets a little bit, you know, nutty. So I appreciate questions about the words as they are put down. I think that those, our presenters do as well. I'm just kind of remembering it kind of came out of a big discussion about, you know, 30-plus people. So I feel like from my perspective that this is really speaking to, you're not, the CFT is not asking for any different information that is already out there, just perhaps maybe in a more spotlighted way, perhaps I could say. Some things are a little bit tougher to get to. Perhaps I would say, and I'm just speaking for myself, when it says discipline and equity issue, maybe the equity issue is many school districts are struggling with issues of equity, and maybe there's a link to an article in the Star Tribune that talks about that across the state. I'm totally making this up, I'm not part of the committee. I'm just trying to give you an example of what I think might have been the intention behind equity issues. And if I'm misspeaking, please clarify.
Mr. Schlesner.
I guess I'm looking at, because this is going to be an advisory to the board itself. So I would look at this information that you would normally provide us as board members for our, for our review and, you know, to formulate questions and so forth. We're giving this group the same information, the same data and ability to do that, and we're just getting more people's eyes on this stuff and being able to have more people ask critical questions about stuff. And there may be times where something comes up and it might be a question, again, that causes us all a little bit of our comfort zone a little bit or what have you. But it's, in my mind, this is stuff we got to deal with, and the more transparent and about, I see this group as a group that can help the board digest this information. And we may not agree with some of the interpretation that comes, that gives us an opportunity to have that conversation back and forth. But at the end of the day, if this works the way, I think you've got where you, we've got a format here, if it works and we're all working together, we're going to be better regardless of what specific, you know, questions or information there might be, you know, on the topic of the day, if you will, for at this point. I think what's, the power of this is the fact that we have a lot of interested people who are willing to roll up their sleeves and say, let's look at the information and data, we'll think about, we're going to look outside, and we'll bring back some ideas and recommendations for the board to consider. We don't, we're seven members, we all have lots of things and having all these people in this army to help us, we should, I think should be looking at this as a, as a good thing. If the information requests, you know, get to be burdensome in some way, then I think we should probably talk about that. But I guess from a board from my side, if we approved this, my expectation would be that, it would be that we would be providing the information that you would just normally provide us and put it in a format that you already, I mean, we didn't have this information until we, you know, a year ago on the website, the site. So as we've been going through the OSW, doing this, we're starting to putting this information up and making it accessible to the whole community. Here we got a group of people that say, hey, we're going to organize as a group and look at the information and data and come back with some recommendations, what we believe it's telling us and some, perhaps some solutions that makes some sense as a district, we've got to be taking a look at it. I see this as nothing but a positive thing in the long haul for the district, and I think we should probably get to it sooner rather than later. Well, I think it might be easier instead, I mean, we have a dedicated section on our website just for all of this, but we could, is it Google Doc? Is that what you created? Okay. It might be, instead of putting it there, we can just send it right to your...
For their purposes, yeah.
I'm learning Google Doc, so I got other people that get it, so we're in good shape. It might be easier to be, then you want to click to find it, we can send it directly to that spot, because if it's just information we present, it's, it's public information anyway, so that's not an issue. It's just, it might be easier just to go to your Google Doc, whatever they call those places, and then you have it right there.
Available.
Right, Google Drive, there you go. I do have one more question, I apologize. Just at the very bottom of your resources, and I agree with opening up, and Kamau, I think you even attended Shrocky Holly's training when we had him a couple of years ago, so we welcome members to come to that. Back when the district was running this group, we opened it up to anybody that was on there, and I know, I know you came the one day of that, so that, I think that's great. However, the Envoy is probably the only one we can't open up to you because it's, we get charged per seat, and we fill it up to, they take, I think they take like 80 participants at one time, and we fill it up to 80, and I know even people like me don't get a go because they charge another, whatever the fee is. So, but all the other ones, you're welcome to attend, so that's not a problem. Just the very last one, access to, we already talked about board and district reports, that's, we'll just put it in your Google place, studies and contracts. I'm just wondering what you mean by studies and contracts.
You know, contracts was, that was a small discussion, and from what I remember, it was, it was like, you know, it's not necessarily like finding out the salary of a particular individual, but I think it was more like the idea of if we did hire an outside source to deal with a particular issue within a school, that we might be privy to understand what that contract meant, what was supposed to be the outcome of that, right? Granted, if I was a specialist of some sort coming to a school, then there'd be kind of a promised outcome for my visit, that we would have an opportunity to see what that is, where it's being placed. If it's, if they're doing it at JA, then we could actually take a look and say, okay, they're trying this new program, this new specialist is coming in, we'd be able to see, you know, according to the data, the figures or even just a community response, then we would be able to determine whether or not that was something that, did that work? Okay, if that worked, then let's try it somewhere else, and those kind of things, right?
Thank you.
Mrs. Becker.
I have a thought on that. I mean, I think we've talked for a while now about having a policy that, you know, that looks at new programs that we bring into the district and say, you know, what is, you know, what is the outcome, you know, what are we looking for, and then have we achieved it or have we not? I know we don't have that policy right now, but I think that's something going forward so that, that might help address something like that too. And I don't know if we were talking about that also in regards to like budget discussions because that's, you know, like adding something new always has budgetary consequences, concerns, pluses, minuses. And so, you know, that might be a, like a spot for you guys, you know, if and when we get that new policy set up and working, that might be a spot to look at it, and maybe it can go into Google Docs and just, and see, and be able to kind of just have, you know, if we have something that, you know, relates to the, you know, to your issues, that might be a, you know, good spot to put it.
May I ask one question, Chair?
Of course.
I did hear Director Marvin talk about collaboration with the Community Engagement Committee, and that's not formally reflected here, and I wondered if that is a recommended edit that we should take back to the group? I have lots of notes of what you've shared that we can take back, but does that need to be formally connected in here somewhere?
Well, I was reacting just to the statements you were making about collaboration and working, you know, working together. From my perspective, I mean, because this is sort of still a genesis and an evolutionary group here, I don't know that we want to limit it to that. And I'm not sure, it may be that there will be one committee at the school board that will work more closely with the Community Focus Team. It may be something else, maybe a representative, or it may be something entirely different. So I'd sort of hate to limit at this point who that is or how that works down the road, maybe.
I have slightly different thoughts, I'll take one step over. I think that this group is very, wants to be all in on things like this, and although membership is dis...
is very, wants to be all in on things like this. And although membership is, is discussed here, the group has never really discussed our role as Jean and Don and I as community engagement committee members of the board, attending those meetings, nor Amy, though I don't think you're going to let Amy go. But it might be nice to have that as, in a more formalized way, that you request a liaison of the board or you request a cabinet member named Amy. But, but also, what didn't come up in, in your discussions that kind of came up earlier was in terms of membership was the participation of district staff, different district teachers, different district administration who have kind of come and gone. And so my recommendation from up here might be that that be another conversation point with your larger group. I know from just a teeny tiny bit of outside information, other school districts, sometimes they ask for or quote unquote require a minimum of, say, three parents, three community members, three, you know, whatever. And I know that some of those things were discussed as well when you discuss students and racial diversity of the committee. So that, from my perspective up here, even kind of sitting in both places, I would like to see a little bit more on membership, just a little, and not the be-all, end-all, because I know that you want it to be an open process, but maybe just some sort of minimums or things to consider going forward from the board perspective, and then also any staff who might be interested, although we know we do have a few staff there who are representing as themselves. But I think that might be worth a discussion.
Yeah, that's a good point, because I, it's not that the equity, I supervise equity specialists, that they haven't wanted to attend, but the directive I was given is that you wanted it more community and you want less district people, so I've asked them not to attend. To me, they're the most logical people from the district that should be part of this group, but they, I just want you to know, they haven't been attending because they didn't want to. It's just, I told them to wait until we're told it's okay for you to participate.
We do have some district staff that have said that they, they wanted to, they wanted to attend as members wearing their mom hat as opposed to their district hat, which, again, is, you know, we have talked about open enrollment for everybody, but we can bring that back.
Absolutely.
As you say, if it's gonna be a task force of the board, that there ought to be some sort of formal connection to the board. That means, that's community engagement people, that's part of that, part of that task and, you know, so be, I think there needs to be a direct board connection, you know, to this.
More so than having them, because I'm here, you, you talked about presenting, was it quarterly or once a year or?
Twice a year at minimum.
At a minimum, right. So more, more than that? So having a, I'm just asking, just clarifying.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, so, so you're wanting a more of a direct connection to the board, and I'm saying, well, do you want it so more than them presenting? So what, what are the board members up here?
Well, I think it would be helpful, I think it would be helpful if, if, at the time they're having discussions, if there's one or two board members there having discussion, hearing discussion firsthand, being a part of that discussion, see what the group, the group is saying and, you know, because they can inform us during the, during the update. We give the updates on the community, the groups that we're part of, it could be part of updating the whole board about what's going in the interim between the time they're reporting here. There may be a couple of meetings, two or three or four meetings before they come and give us a, give us a report. So there could be some interim reports if the board members are actually part of that group and attending and maybe as much, you know, as listening and just kind of being there and, and to know what's going on and reporting back to the board. And if that's all that is, that, at least that keeps another layer of communication going in, in between things. I'm less concerned about, I mean, I, I get your, I respect your, you go with the members. I'm less concerned about that, that, because I think over time you can look at the group and you can assess, is there, there need, but this group, the names up there, this is a diverse, a group of people that represent, I think, our, our district and, you know, I'm satisfied with that, that representation is there. And I'd hate to, I'd hate to prescribe a lot of that at this point. We can always do that if we, if we feel the need to do that, but I think to the extent that we're not trying to tie them up with, with, you know, rules, regulations or processes, other than them looking at the issues and, you know, so you're free to talk about, so we don't get down in the weeds, I guess, is what I'm, what I'm trying to say, trying to not do a very well job at, very good job at it. But I think the less we prescribe, but I, I do think there needs to be a board, some sort of formal board connection to, if it's going to be an advisory board. I don't know how you do that if people aren't going to the meetings and are, are a part, at least observing the discussion.
I would say that Dr. Marvin and Ms. Seelinger have been really good about bringing back information during our, our school board committee updates.
Yeah.
So were you looking for something more than that?
I'm just saying that we don't, it's not, we just want to make sure that that, the formal tie is, that's all I'm saying. That's, that's about as far as I go with membership, I guess, at this point. Make sure that we're represented as a part of that.
At this stage, this is just a briefing item. Could you give us some direction as to what you would like us to do with it tonight?
I think the expectation was that we probably would have some things to take back to the full group, so we probably would like to bring you a final draft for, maybe even on the consent, if you're okay with that, at a mid-January meeting?
That sounds good.
Yeah, I'd say consent would be fine, as long as there's no, nothing, nothing materially different in what's being proposed. If there's something to be materially different, then we probably, we can always pull it off, but it might be best just not, just have it as a way of argument, if that's the case.
I think that the, the membership one, it got complicated. And, you know, people started bringing in the idea of quorum and stuff like that. I, I don't know that the group will, will change, but it's something we'll bring back to them. Because it, it got super complicated and we decided we needed to get it moved forward.
I would, I would say that to that point, that's always, I think, been nice to, when we're talking, you come up with a recommendation, to know how many, if the group is, you know, thirty people or forty people, how many people actually participated in that discussion and, and with the recommendation. Because we ended up, we get down to two or three people, then, and then we have to say, well, are we, are we really representing, is it really serving what the needs, the higher level need that we were hoping that it would? Or has it become something, you know, more or less as two or three people's kind of?
Yeah, because the, the list they showed up there are not, some of those were people that were part of the first group, especially a lot of the district people have...
A lot of them are here tonight.
Pulled off because that's the word that we got, that they want to be more of a community group. So they, we've even kind of told them to back away until they're told to come. So don't think that every name that you saw up on that screen tonight has been attending all of these meetings at the end, towards the end.
We have list was from, from the space, too. So any of the people you saw up there had been people that have, have attended since May.
And we've probably averaged thirty to thirty-five people on most meetings, so.
So sort of the consensus of what I'm hearing is that with this group, you want to have connection with the board. I can't speak for the entire board, I will speak for myself, is I don't want any of you to feel that the board is imposing something on you to do or direction to go. It's your committee and it's your show. And we're very happy to, I'm very happy to speak for everybody on that, to collaborate with you on that and to get your feedback so we can work together to reduce some of the, the issues that we have in the public schools. So if you see people showing up from the district, it's not a hostile takeover. It's because we're interested and we want to actually hear what, how you're discussing things. So, and please feel free to say, you know, sorry, you, too many of you here tonight, you need to leave. So I'm cool with that.
Thanks for all your efforts.
Thank you so much. This is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is great. We will take a five-minute recess at eight sixteen PM.
Thank you.
At eight twenty-eight PM. That was a long five minutes, but I think everybody needed it. Effective, Efficient and Effective Operations, 7.01. Approval of School District Property Tax Levy Payable 2018. This is an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 Rochester, Minnesota, being a school district in Olmsted County, Minnesota, that there be, that there be and is hereby proposed a levy upon all taxable property in said school district, a new calendar year 2018 school tax for fiscal year 2019 in the amount of fifty-two million, seven hundred forty-five thousand, one hundred one dollars and ninety cents as follows. General Fund, forty-one million, three hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars, forty-nine cents. Community Services Fund, two million, two hundred, is it two hundred or three hundred?
Three hundred.
Three hundred sixty-eight dollars.
Thousand.
Thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars, fifty-four cents. I knew I shouldn't have stopped in the middle of that number. General Debt Service Fund, nine million, fifty-seven thousand, one hundred seventy-nine dollars, eighty-seven cents. Total Certified Levy, fifty-two million, seven hundred forty-five thousand, one hundred one dollars, ninety cents.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
We've been, we've been through it.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Good discussion.
I don't want people to think we just jumped on it.
Getting too punchy now. Seven point oh two, Approval of Advertisement Agreements. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, since Mr. Queasely is not available at this time, I'm gonna pinch-hit for him. This is a advertising agreement to, for panels on a new scoreboard that will be in their gymnasium. Once the school board, school board is put up, they will sell advertising on the panels, very similar to what John Marshall and Mail High School are currently doing. So far, they have agreements, and this is what we're asking you to act on tonight with Knutson Construction, Pasquale's Neighborhood Pizzeria and Bremmer Bank. And they are committing to a three-year agreement for two thousand dollars per year for advertising on the Century scoreboard.
Are there gonna be more added to that?
As they continue to get additional sponsors.
Do we have to approve each sponsor?
Yes, yeah. So we won't, we'll wait until they get a couple more and bring them back as a group versus one at a time. So, but this, these are the three that they have so far.
Mr. Munoz, can you tell us a little bit about where these funds go?
According to policy, in, in these particular three, they have not restricted the funding. I do know, for example, at John Marshall, a couple of their advertisers only wanted the funds to go to John Marshall. So once the score clock is paid off, then the funding generated from the advertising will stay in the John Marshall Activities account. These three particular ones have not requested that, so it will go into a district pot and distributed between the three high schools.
Thank you.
Once the scoreboard is paid off, yeah.
Would that be just athletic activities or anywhere in the district for anything?
It goes in the Activities account.
So you want us to take action on this tonight, or?
I don't think there's a, a rush, but nothing, nothing will change.
So we can put this on a consent agenda for the...
Yeah, we could put on consent, or you can take action tonight, because nothing will, nothing's gonna change between now and then.
Move approval.
You mean move to action?
Move to action.
I'll second.
Any discussion about moving this item to action? All those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. It's now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby agree to approve the advertisement agreements between Rochester Public Schools and Knutson Construction, Pasquale's Neighborhood Pizzeria and Bremmer Bank based on years agreed upon above.
Move approval.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just one point. I feel okay about moving this to action and voting on it tonight because as Mr. Munoz said, this absolutely follows district policy about this kind of thing.
Yes.
So.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Seven point oh three, Approval of Minnesota Energy Easement at Kellogg Middle School Site. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm gonna call Scott Sheridan, Executive Director, Facilities, to brief us on this item.
Good evening, board members. I'm here to brief you on a request from Minnesota Energy for an easement at Kellogg Middle School. This is a follow-up to one that we approved or you approved back in January of 2016. You took action on it at, and we, they paid a price of five dollars per square foot for a thousand square feet of area that they put their regulator on. Since that time, they had some complaints from the neighbor where they built it. It was right on the end of Fifth Avenue Northeast, right on the south end of Kellogg property. And so in consideration of the complaints that they've been receiving regarding that, they're going, they're requesting to move it further to the east. So that would require, first of all, access to it, so they have an, an assessment where they have access to it from Fifth Avenue. So it's a small strip of land, and then take the regulator and move it further to the east. The total square footage increase is eleven hundred and eighty-two square feet. Working with Business Services, John Carlson, we're comfortable with the five dollar per square foot price still. So the increase of eleven hundred and eighty-two square feet equates to five thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. They will see the current area that they have, give that back to us. And so we're comfortable with what, what we've offered to them. We presented that to them and Minnesota Energy Resource Corporation, Merka it's called, emailed me back late last week, said that they'd accept that offer of fifty-nine, or five thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars to pay for that eleven hundred and eighty-two extra square feet. And they even went above and beyond and already drew up the paperwork, which they gave us to us yesterday, and they, we just put it on the board doc late yesterday. And John Carlson has reviewed it and is comfortable with it. And the reason they did that is they're trying to beat the weather and they want to get going on it and start digging on December eighteenth.
So you'd like us to move this to action?
Thank you, yes.
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
So this is a one-time fee?
Yes.
Ms. Seelinger?
I have a question. So in the, the map, it looks like it says proposed location centered on garage. Was, was it in front of the person's house? Is that why they complained and asked it to be moved down a little bit? Is that the...
Exactly correct, yes.
Okay.
And they're gonna put a wooden wall around it as well as soundproof to help with the soundproofing.
I'd move this item to action.
All those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve an easement from Minnesota Energy Resources Corporation of two thousand, one hundred eighty-two square feet at Kellogg Middle School. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby agree to credit Minnesota Energy Resources Corporation for their payment on one thousand square feet of land from the board-approved action on January fifth, 2016, and accept the offer from Minnesota Energy Resources Corporation for the remaining one thousand, one hundred eighty-two square feet in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred ten dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just one question. So basically, we're, we're just trying to be good neighbors here.
Yes.
Okay. Do we do this kind of stuff very often?
Not at any other site since I've been here, but I don't, another board member or cabinet member might be able to answer.
All the time at Century, we did some.
We've done some easements, but I think this is the first one we've done with, since I've been here with Minnesota Energy. But we've done other easements with the city and, or developers, yeah.
Didn't we do something at Bamber?
Yeah, we did it at the county, we did it at the county.
Yeah, something with the county.
So maybe once or twice a year at most.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Scott. I think you're gonna stay there.
I think so.
Seven point oh-four, approval of refuse and recycling services. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, uh, we're gonna have, Andrew's going to, uh, coordinate our facility services. We'll join Scott on briefing us on this agenda item.
Good evening again, Board Members. As you remember, on October third, Andrew and I brought to you our twenty-five-year plan for the replacement of our capital, uh, equipment and vehicles, and a discussion that took place at that time regarding our garbage truck was, uh, a suggestion to go out and create an RFP to get, uh, costs for private contracting services for the refuse and recycling services that we currently do in-house. And on October seventeenth, we brought, we brought another information item forward to you, requesting some information on how to write that, uh, RFP, what you were looking, uh, for, that we could put in that RFP in order to present it to the private contractors. So, we took, uh, the information you provided at that meeting, and we created an RFP, which went out in late October, and, which were due back on November fourteenth. And on November fourteenth, we received two proposals, and we, uh, had a scoring system where we evaluated what they proposed. We interviewed the two companies that put in, and, uh, the proposal that, uh, rated the highest was the one from advanced disposal for an annual cost of two hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. And that would be an annual fee for three years, with the option for, uh, year four and five to be renegotiated, uh, if we so choose, if we could come to a negotiated settlement for four and five, year four and five. There was, uh, we tried to estimate at that time, or Andrew did, regarding the extra service pickups, because that's the piece that is kind of the unknown here. How many extra service pickups would it take on an annual basis, uh, that we normally do in-house? And Andrew estimated about sixteen hundred and eighty-six dollars it would cost roughly for extra pickups. So we added that, uh, to their total to give you a general idea of what it would cost on an annual basis in comparison to what, uh, we do. Andrew then created a PowerPoint that, uh, he can go over with you as far as it outlines the current operating costs that we have in-house. Some of it is, uh, a little subjective, and he can explain how he came up with the numbers. But in the end, then, we, we think, we think we could, it's a really good comparison as far as our estimated costs and what the proposal for an advanced disposal was, and will put it in your fine hands to guide us where you would like to go from there.
So looking at our current operating costs, we took a lot of what we're currently seeing, truck repairs, breakdowns, salary and benefits for a driver, um, fuel, insurance, dumpsters that we're replacing on a regular basis. Um, we amateurized the trucks over seventeen years that we currently had our current refuse truck. We kinda had to estimate for our current trade-in value if we were to sell that truck and replace it with something, uh, newer. Uh, so we do have some estimates in this, um, based on market studies and looking up what some other current trucks are going for. The biggest line item on the proposed, the current operating and the proposed operating costs is the tipping fees, which is our cost to get rid of the refuse at the Olmsted County Waste-to-Energy Facility. So in these two, it took a full year from our fifteen, sixteen school year calendar and used that number. Uh, that number was very comparable to what we saw for tipping fees in fourteen, fifteen. And we came up with a total annual, annual operating cost currently of two hundred and ninety-four thousand. So moving that out and proposing operating costs over approximately the next fifteen years, if we were to go out and purchase new equipment, keep the refuse service in-house, purchasing new trucks, keeping on, uh, our dumpsters, upgrading them as necessary, estimating repair costs for those future years, we come up to a slightly higher number of the two hundred and ninety-four thousand. That could be affected if tipping fees are increased over the next few years through Olmsted County Waste-to-Energy Facility, or if our garbage volumes do go up, um, more tonnage is higher tipping fees. So looking at some of our current equipments that we are running the refuse service with, um, our refuse truck is a two-thousand international truck, and we paid ninety-one thousand for that originally. Repairs are getting quite costly on that truck. Uh, we spent about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand on that in the past seventeen years. Big point on that truck is, it is a little lighter duty than we would like to see the, the gross vehicle weight rating of that truck is not meeting our current refuse volumes. So we're having to unload it, uh, twice a day, a couple days a week, so we stay below the legal limits of what we can haul in that truck. Uh, that also contributes to higher repair costs, 'cause we're over, we are running it fully capaci- at its capacity at all times. Another, uh, so it's got about a hundred and ninety thousand miles on it and twenty-one thousand hours. To equate that with an over-the-road truck, uh, that's about a million miles. An over-the-road semi that's hauling freight all the time is about a million miles at ten thousand hours. So approximately, if you were to equate that to a truck going down the highway all the time, our city stop-and-go driving, we don't put as many miles on. Uh, the recycling truck's a little bit newer, gets less miles, um, so we've had less repairs on that. We have a few years of serviceable life left with that, with that machine, but it is getting close to its end as well. And then dumpsters, we own about a hundred and ten dumpsters throughout the district for garbage recycling, um, rolling totes that we use for collection of refuse and recycling. We replace about ten of those a year. So moving forward, we have two options that we could proceed. Uh, option A would be to retain the refuse services in-house, uh, going by the proposed equipment costs that you've seen. Option B would be to contract out the refuse services, uh, according to the RFP that we sent out and the two bids that we received from con- private contractors. Our low proposal was advanced disposal, as Scott's already said. The RFP that we sent out included information that we gathered from you, um, and also on how we're currently running our refuse routes with size of dumpsters at sites, how many pickups that, uh, sites need on a weekly basis. But we left it up to them to run the routes and propose to us their best practices. Um, we've heard back from the contractors, they're gonna run it very similar to how we have been, um, splitting up our routes between four to five of their current, current routes. So we'd have a number of different trucks that would be picking up as they are about their town. Extra volume would be about sixteen hundred dollars a year, just a, an estimate. We see that. The extra stops are last week of school, when we're seeing really heavy volumes, uh, senior party days, uh, special events that happen on the weekends, stuff like that. Moving forward to a contracted refuse service, the contractor would provide all new dumpsters for us, and they would move to a frontloads dumpster system. Um, at the time, if we were to, uh, quit hauling in-house, we would lose our, we would have to relinquish our license with Olmsted County to haul refuse. The license allows us to haul Olmsted County trash that we're currently contracting with, and also a little bit of city trash from the National Volleyball Center. Uh, if we were to ever wanna move back to an in-house refuse service, we could haul our own trash by getting a permit from the city, but we would not be able to obtain that license again to contract out to the county or other, any other entities. Uh, that's part of a county board statute, that once the license is gone, they are not issuing any new ones. One other thing with the contractors, they would provide three five-hundred-dollar scholarships to students, is what we've heard from advanced disposal. And that's all the information we have at this point. Uh, we've opened for any questions that you might have.
Before we do that, I did, a couple things I do wanna add. I did talk to someone in the county, because I wanted to get a better understanding of this license thing, and, uh, 'cause, to be honest, I first thought we'd lose our license and couldn't ever haul our own, but I was informed that we could haul our own. If, let's say, three years from now, the price just skyrockets, and we just say, no, we wanna, we wanna go back and do it ourselves, we can haul our own, but we'll, as Andrew said, we could not, uh, continue doing, we couldn't start doing the county again. Uh, the county has expressed to me a strong interest in us continuing to haul, uh, their...
Strong.
Pretty strong. Uh, so, a- another option could be, if we do decide to outsource, um, that we can continue doing the county, it generates some funds, which we could use to keep our trucks. The downside of that is, we'd have to keep our trucks, keep them up to speed. But a bigger issue is, I don't know where we would put all of these dumpsters, that, you know, it's not like we have all kinds of storage space for these dumpsters to, you know, three years from now, we'd wanna go back into the business. But, uh, I, I do know the county, uh, has a strong interest in us continuing to do their service for them, uh, so that could be an option, um, even if we decide just to go all-in, and, uh, it might be a way to generate some funds. I don't know if it would, in the long run, if it would, the cost of keeping the trucks up and running would, if we'd ever come out ahead from what we make, I, I do know we could probably, um, increase our income a little bit on what we're currently getting.
I have a, I have a couple of questions. So, um, I understand that if we were to buy a new truck right now, it would be about a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars?
That's correct.
And if it were a front-loading truck, it would be a hundred thousand dollars more?
Yes.
Um, but then we would still have to replace all our, all of our dumpsters, is that correct?
Moving to?
Right, because they're not designed for the front?
Correct. We have a rear-load truck now and rear-load dumpsters.
Right, okay.
So moving to that other truck, it would be new dumpsters.
Okay. And then, if we were to, um, engage this vendor in hauling our, our garbage, um, what would we have any option to, if we decide not to continue with them, would we have any option to purchase their dumpsters from them, since ours would no longer, you know, if we decided we were gonna upgrade to a different kind of truck at some point, if we were to return to hauling our own garbage, then we wouldn't have a problem with storage of those dumpsters, because they would no longer be useful for us. So, would we be in a position, then, of having to buy all new dumpsters?
I think most likely, we would be buying new dumpsters. I would guess that the contractor, at that point, they own the containers?
Right.
And they're gonna want them back. Um, we would have to purchase containers.
And I, I guess that's where I was, I mean, I'm trying to take a longer view, um, if, if there might possibly be an option to purchase those from, from the vendor.
Potentially. I think we'd be purchasing them either way, whether they're purchasing them from the vendor, the used ones, or if we were purchasing a new dumpster from a dumpster manufacturer.
Mrs. Becker?
So, in, are we currently, um, so if we would go with the contracted service, would we still be picking up the county garbage?
That's...
We would have to come to an agreement with them.
Yeah, that's a decision we would have to make.
I mean, is the RFP, the county is, the county is on, county and city are on their own?
Yes. Yep. The county is getting numbers right now from contractors to have their refuse picked up, should we contract out our service. So we've been in communication with them since we started this RFP to let them know what's, what's happening and what could potentially happen.
So there could be a point of negotiation with the county, depending on what their bids are for, to have not us do it versus continue having us do it. I, I guess I would see the advantage of doing that, is that we would, um, retain the license to pick up in the future, should we decide to go back to it, to hauling our own. Mrs. Becker?
Why, why, why do we really wanna be hauling our own garbage? I mean, what's the, I mean, what's the real advantage? I mean, I, you know, what I've heard, the reason why we went to it was because there were some safety concerns or something. So it wasn't a monetary reason why we went to it. It was that we were concerned about the safety of our students, and I, I realize that. So, I mean, at this point, I mean, just looking at the number, um, it's slightly less expensive for us to contract out. Um, and I think Mr. Carlson had said that we have a chunk of money that we've been setting aside?
Correct.
That, um, potentially would be used for a new truck. And if we're contracting out, we could then use that chunk of money for something else that maybe would be more directly beneficial for students. I realize that picking up garbage and having a clean environment is beneficial for students, but if we had, if we could do something more directly beneficial for students, um, I, I guess I don't, I don't, I don't understand why we wanna be hauling our own garbage. I just, I, I, I just don't understand that. I don't know why we wanna do that.
Well, I, I, we're not making recommendations, that's what we are suggesting. We, we're providing the facts to the board to make that decision.
I know, I'm just, I'm asking the question, I mean, 'cause we've had, I mean, okay, everybody knows, we've had this discussion for a long time. I mean, in a lot of, in a lot of different ways, and a lot of different reasons, and I, I don't understand, I mean, it, to me, it seems like we have enough issues in our school district, and if we can take one thing off everybody's plate, I mean, you guys certainly have enough to do without, you know, thinking about, okay, is truck thirty-three gonna work today? Is it not? If it doesn't, okay, how are we gonna be spinning everything so, um, you know, can we use the, the recycle truck for it, or, you know, whatever? So I mean, to me, it just seems like that would just, you know, 'cause it seems like we've had trouble with truck thirty-three for a long time. I mean, looking at the number of repairs that we've had, I mean, it's, you know, two and a half times what the truck cost.
Correct.
I mean, it's so, I mean, so you start thinking about your car, and it's like, well, okay, if the repairs on your car were, you know, two and a half times what you paid for it, it would be like, whoa. But anyway, so I'm just, I'm wondering why we're continuing to have this discussion.
Well, we, you don't need to convince us. I mean, back when we first did it, when I came, the bids that came in, we were cheaper, even though there was debate on that. We were cheaper than what the other people who bid the same thing. So, then we just didn't do anything. So, we're, uh, they asked me, should we make a recommendation? I said, you know, because of this topic, give them the facts, we, and I think I said this at a meeting, we would love to have it go away, I mean, that's one, you're right, it's one less headache. I mean, there's always a headache when you contract out, because are they gonna do it exactly the way you want them to do it, and you hope that they will? So that's a risk. But you're right, it's, it's one less hassle. We can, these guys don't care either way. Uh, but at the time, when we first started this conversation, the bids were higher than what we were doing, and that's why we suggested that we continue doing it. Now, the bids, at least one of the bids, is very comparable of what, what it cost us. I, the truck question, had we bought a new truck back, actually, I think you were even gonna buy it before I even started on contract, we would've dumped that, I mean, it's just like a car, after so many miles, you trade it in, because it starts getting, you know, you're putting way too much money into it, so you wanna get rid of it. We didn't do that, we, we just kept repairing that truck. But I think these guys would say, outsource it. I mean, it's, that's fine with us, we're okay with that.
Mr. Smith?
First, I, I wanna thank you for doing the analysis, because that was really, the first thing, the first time we didn't have that, the benefit of doing this kind of in-depth now, so I really, really appreciate that. Second thing, I would say that, you know, garbage is something that's necessarily evil, we have to deal with it, we gotta remove it, we generate, we gotta, we've gotta get rid of it. It's not core to our mission, though. Our mission is to educate the students, uh, and, you know, and I look at this, to me, it's a rather simple decision. It's, it may not be a lot of money, but it's four thousand dollars more we have to go to a classroom, as opposed to going into, uh, you know, a truck or, or providing, providing a service. We get a three-year contract, we, you know, we can evaluate it, uh, the next time, we probably should've, if we're gonna remove, we probably should go to a front-end loader anyway, 'cause they're more efficient, and, aren't they? They're more efficient?
Yeah, potentially.
They take less manpower, less manpower, and they're more, more efficient, we probably do that any, should... probably do that, should do that anyway. But to me, based on the analysis that you've done, it's fairly clear that it's cheaper to contract it out, and we should capture the savings of that, how little they are, and, and to the point that you can do that, if you can still get the county to be a part of that contract, and we can upcharge that to make more, make more money on to do that, then we've increased the amount of money by doing, doing that a little more that can go into the, back into the classroom. So to me, it's a relatively simple, even though it's maybe a toss-up, the fact is, the analysis shows it's cheaper to contract it.
I'm going to ask you a question that you can't answer. So I'd be interested to know at what rate our costs have gone up over the last 10 years versus how much if we had contracted with a vendor, and this is what you don't know, how much of those costs would have gone up in the same amount of time? Because I'm looking at these two bids, and there is a difference of about $36,000 a year between them at this point. So it's obvious as to which bid we should, which would go through if we choose this, this route. At the same time, I'm wondering if the higher bid might be a better reflection of what it might cost us in the future. Because, you know, you know, it's, it's the whole, it's the whole question of, we don't know how much costs are going to go up three years from now, that's an unknown. We might have a little bit better handle on how much our costs would go up in the, in the same amount of time. So my, my reluctance, I mean, I certainly see the advantages of not doing our own garbage and having an extra $4,000 in the general fund for, for students. But at the same time, I think we, we really need to consider the questions that we can answer right now, which is what might the potential increase be down the road? I mean, we could do it for three years, and then if the...
Prices go up too, so you got to do both.
Right, and that's why I asked if, if we had any kind of a trajectory on our increasing costs.
I do have a spreadsheet from 2011 that I didn't complete, so I didn't double-check all these figures. But for what it's worth, at that point, the operations costs were 104,000 figured out compared to our 122 currently. And at that point in 20, in '09, '10, the tipping fees were 142,000 compared to, we're seeing 243,000 at this point.
Tipping fees are the biggest...
So the tipping fees are really the biggest? And we don't have control over that?
Correct.
At all?
Well, yes, and we don't have the control over the fee, but if we can reduce our garbage output, then we do have a little bit of control. The more we recycle, the less we tip, our tipping fees are.
Mr. Schluessner.
I think you're, you're on with your analysis, because if you really look at the analysis closely like I did last night, if we had a proper-sized truck, the overall cost would be less. Overall mission for the district is, yes, to educate the student, but we do that by being as effective as a district as we can be. And sometimes we have to worry about things that you normally would have to worry about, like garbage. I, I think if we had a properly-sized truck, overall fees year to year would be less, because like you said, we wouldn't have to be driving it so much, you'd have less fuel.
I did estimate that in my proposed costs of less repairing of a properly-sized truck, which would offset the cost of a new truck at this point. That's why those two proposals were very similar.
And your analysis was amortizing it over 15 years instead of over three years. 15 years at that constant rate is a whole lot better than the three years, even if that three years is slightly less than our costs.
You're going to amortize it over the life of, of the asset, though. It's 15 years, not three years.
And that's with an improperly-sized asset.
Well... Ms. Marvin.
Two questions, and the first one's the least important thing you're going to address all evening. If we did go to a, a private hauler, do we have to pay to get rid of our dumpsters?
No, we have had a, a private hauler contact us about purchasing our trucks and dumpsters at this point.
Okay. And then the second question, and I guess this is for the board, is our decision tonight whether to go to a private company or continue doing our own? Or if we decide that we are going to contract out, then do we also need to decide if we're going to continue hauling the city or the county garbage? Keep a truck and keep doing that?
Well, definitely tonight, we'd like the decision either to outsource or not, and then we can, I mean, eventually, we're going to have to communicate with the county about if we're going to do theirs or not, but I don't know if that has to be decided tonight or not. But I, I do have a question on, on, on the contract with the provider. You know, if the tipping fees go up year two and three, does that impact our contract at all?
Not at this point, no, because that was a, it was a hard number for year two and three.
So they would just have to absorb the additional costs?
Yeah.
Okay.
The optional fourth and fifth years, they, they could come back to us and say, fuel is $5 a gallon, and our tipping fees doubled, we need to present a new cost to you at that point.
And if, if you remember, when we renewed our transportation costs, it did go up a little bit because the fuel, I mean, I, that's, I think you can expect it, because, I mean, our costs will probably, if tipping fees go up, it would impact us if we're doing it ourselves. So, you know, we, we've kind of tried to resist making a recommendation, but I guess I would, if I was pushed to make one, I would recommend that we outsource it. And to be honest with you, I haven't had a good time to have a conversation with these people about continuing with the county or not. I would like to have that conversation and bring that back at a later date on, on that, but probably in January because we do want to be upfront with, with the county if we decide to not accommodate them, but...
What if the county didn't repay them? Did anybody ask the county that question?
They probably don't want to get into the business.
That's a question to ask.
I guess I would be more comfortable with moving on with a, a private vendor to do this if I had the assurance preferably in writing from the county that we still would be able to haul their garbage, since they're already looking at bids from other places. That's a piece of information for me that would be critical.
Well, we can, and the person was very, really wanted me to understand that the county wants us to continue doing it for them. I believe it's probably, I have no facts, I believe it's probably because they find out that we're pretty cheap compared to what they would have to pay to have a private person do it, which gives us a little leverage if we want to do that. But we can continue doing that with, with our license, and there's at least an interest in the county that we do that. She said that to me multiple times, she wanted to make sure I understood that.
My question. Ms. Steeler?
Thank you. So we have, the, the money that we have set aside for the potential new truck, if we decide not to buy a new truck, what happens to that money?
It would, it would just go into operating, I mean, it could be used for other vehicles as we have to...
Operating, no, it's not general fund.
Yeah, no.
No, it goes to general fund, that is general.
It's a general fund, so they can go back to the classroom. It could go anywhere, but we, I would prefer to, I know Scott would prefer to keep it in his department, but...
We do have other equipment needs, you know, significant need, like potentially a front-end loader, large lawn, lawnmower, that kind of thing that would be ideal for that.
But it is also one-time money.
I understand that.
We, sorry, earlier, we did address in the RFP the safety issue, and we restricted the drop, or the pickup times at the elementary schools and the high schools that have, you know, tight areas with parent pickup and everything, to answer your previous question there, to keep the contractors out of those areas.
Mr. Smith.
I say, I'm going to go back, with the analysis we have, you know, is what we have to make the decision on. If there's things not included in there, it's not part of the analysis. We can guess it's low, it's high, it is the analysis. I'm again going to stand by the analysis. I'd also argue that in the future, the fact that we're not doing, you may get four or five bidders next time instead of, instead of two bidders, which would drive the, the cost down some too. I mean, it's a competitive, it's a competitive business, and there are people doing this because that's their, that's their work, line of business. And I, you know, it's hard for, it's hard for private sector to compete with public sector, I will, I will say that. So if we're willing to, you know, ignore, you know, the fact that, that, now, much, it's 4,000 bucks, and it's $100,000 we can recapture from the general fund if you want to ignore it and keep it, I guess, at the end of the day, isn't going to make that big a difference one way or the other. But to me, it's $4,000 that goes to, to a classroom somewhere that, wait, it's $4,000, we don't have to cut sometime down, down the road because we got that money in there. I don't know about, you know, the, what the future, we can, you know, you got to discount that anyway, so, but, you know, unless you want to, unless you want to go out and, you know, I'm accepting your, your good work for what it is, and I think, to me, I'm using that, simply looking at what you've done, it's cheaper for us to contract it.
Hang on a second, I'll call on you. I have another question that you can't answer. There's been some discussion, I've been told that nothing's going to happen with this on the part of the city in terms of having districts for garbage pickup. What thought would we have, how would that impact us if we kept, would it impact us if we kept our own garbage or collecting our own garbage? But more importantly, on the part of the vendors, if they are restricted to only certain parts of the city, how would that, that could impact?
I think that would initially affect residential routes.
Okay.
A lot of our sites are picked up five days a week, so they wouldn't be able to quadrant out and restrict to pick up to only the Mayo High School South Quadrant on Mondays, because we have to pick up that site five days a week. So I think that would be initially a residential thing.
Okay.
That's all the discussion's been about, is residential.
Mrs. Becker.
So there was some, some discussion on the tipping fee, and it talked about, well, you know, if our garbage increases, the tipping fee would increase. But there's nothing to say that, you know, we as a district, if the tipping fee goes up in year four, that we don't say, okay, everyone, we have to recycle more and, and, you know, move that tipping fee down. So, I mean, there's, you know, yes, it can go up, but it maybe could go down. I mean, if we, you know, if we're recycling more, if we have less waste, if we, you know, if we don't have all the, the course, course catalogs that people are, people are throwing away, students are throwing away, we just have them online, you know, maybe, I don't know. So I, so I think it's, I mean, there's always different ways you can look at it, and I don't know that, you know, you can just always say, well, it's just always going to go up, and it's like, well, I don't know, we, we have control over, over a lot of stuff, and, and so...
At some point, it might be cost-effective for us to invest in a digester or something, and then we burn garbage and we, and we create energy out of that, and that's what we eat and cool, cool our own buildings with. I mean, if you really, where the, where the world is going towards, you know, more of the energy, energy thing, that's, that's going to change drastically in the next 10, 10 to 15 years. We might find that it becomes economically viable for us to take our garbage and convert it into energy.
We can have one of our science fair kids that come to the board meetings to create that force.
You know, I don't know about you, Gary, but I don't plan on being involved in that decision in 15 years.
15 years? It may be sooner than that, but no, I plan on being part of it.
Ms. Steeler?
So I just have, I want to circle back to Dr. Marvin's point earlier about what decisions are making in process. So the decision before us tonight is, is the outsourcing of the refuse process. But the outstanding questions then are what happens to our current equipment and what happens to our current relationship with the city and county? And so then my question is, are those decisions that are going to be made by administration or are those decisions that are going to be made by the board?
Well, by policy, we could make it by administration because it's under $100,000, but we would probably, not probably, we would bring it back to the board, and I just think we need more time to talk amongst ourselves and then have communication with the county and see how that may play out if we decide to continue doing theirs or not, but...
You want to do that before you decide, or you want us to do after, wait until after you've had that?
I feel it's, I have some hesitation making those, this decision on the table without all that information.
I agree. I agree. Mr. Schluessner.
What happens to the people? Do we have a dedicated garbage truck driver and a dedicated refuse truck driver?
We have about 1.2 FTEs right now that are running our refuse and recycling routes.
Part of this decision, those FTEs?
We have a retirement on January 31st, so I'm guessing if we contracted out, we would, that FTE would be cut, and we would, I have kind of a built-in, through attrition, an open position.
So we're not going to be affecting employees with this decision, most likely?
No.
Mrs. Becker.
So I need some more understanding from the board members who want to know about what we're going to do with the county and the city garbage before you make this particular decision. I, I just, I don't know where you're coming from, so I need, you have to help me understand.
Well, just in terms of the cost, you know, if the district continued to haul the county garbage, we'd have to keep a truck, we'd have some cost involved in that in addition to, and I guess the thing is then, would the revenue we get pay for all of that? I, I think to Mike's point that he wants to have some more conversations.
Those are answers we need to look into and look at several years, the money we would generate would...
But that's only if we're, the only decision that affects really is if we're going to continue to haul the city and the county, it doesn't really affect if we're, if we're not hauling ours anymore.
We could have somebody else haul ours and we could still haul theirs.
No, I understand that.
So...
So I don't understand, so I, so to me, it seems like they're separate decisions. I don't know why one is dependent upon the other.
I'm just looking at what the finance, financial repercussions would be. I mean, does it pay for us to do, I think bottom line is that Mike's going to do some more checking on that, get the information and bring it back. I'm not ready to make a decision tonight one way or the other.
I think our spreadsheets would look quite a bit differently if we weren't spreading out some of the fixed costs between the county and us. Right now, we're sharing some of those costs, such as the FTE driver, the insurance, the amateurization of a vehicle. And if we're spreading that out just over the county, it's going to be a...
So really, so what you're saying is if we did that, then we're just accounting for our own, probably then our costs are higher, because we, we would absorb those costs instead of spreading it to the county.
That's why we need to have some more information, I feel.
To me, it just makes it, makes the gap greater, I mean, it just makes the gap in the two greater. I'll do, you know, I'm happy to do whatever we want to do, but this is not that complicated decision in my view. But we can, we can sit here and come back, meeting after meeting, and debate this thing back, back and, back and forth, and, and, you know, I'll vote my vote, you guys can vote your vote, and it'll, the chips will fall to the main, we'll move on. I just want to resolve this one way or another and get, get beyond it. It's time we do that. And I'm willing to wait, if you want more information, let's wait and get it till you want to vote, I'm happy to do that too. But let's just move on from this thing at some point. It's just not that complicated in my mind.
Chair.
Yes. Mr. Smith, please don't patronize your fellow board members. It may be a very simple decision to you, but, and I respect that you're saying if you want more information, but I believe the tone of your voice is very disrespectful, disrespectful for those of us who want to take more time with this decision.
It is what it is.
Is there any urgency if we do not act on this tonight, but if we wait and get more information and bring it back sometime in January?
No, it's just that retirement piece where at the end of the month, it's kind of the timing would have worked out fine, but we can absorb it, I believe.
I would keep the open position open if we were to contract it out, so we wouldn't affect someone.
Yeah, temporarily, till we know.
I don't know, with the holiday coming up, we probably won't be able to have that for the January 2nd board meeting, but we could have it for the 2nd January meeting. Give them a little more time to...
What's that, have what?
January 16th.
Have some more information brought back to us by January 16th.
How long is the bid good?
Yeah, how long is, yeah, when does the contractor want to know?
Well, they're anxious to know. They don't have a, we don't have a deadline date with them that we have to let them know. They have to hold their bids for 60 days, was it?
So that's till when?
November's...
January 14th? Mid-January?
Is that before or after the meeting that we're talking?
Meeting's January 16th.
So can we, so could you guys get the information before then, for the first meeting in January?
I don't believe that the county has sent out an RFP, so they don't have a deadline. When I've been talking to them, they just said they were asking for quotes. So, just whenever they get their numbers back from the.
If, if they're very anxious to hear from us, I can imagine that they wouldn't be willing to extend their time a little bit longer if necessary?
Certainly, they certainly would. After the 60 days that was written in the RFP, they wouldn't have to hold their pricing after that point. I would imagine they would, but, because they held it through three years through the RFP. But I can't speak for that because it wasn't part of it.
Okay, we will move on to 7.05, five-year general fund financial forecast. This is an information, I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, I can't read numbers tonight. After those millions, I'm done. 7.05, approval of purchase agreement for the sale of excess land at the facility service center. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yeah, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will brief us on this item.
Good evening, board members. I hope I remember what I was coming up here to talk about. It's been a couple hours. So this one is the approval of a purchase agreement for sale of excess land at Facility Services Center. So if you'll remember back in May, we were approached by a buyer. We did not have our land on the market, but they wanted to buy about nine acres of our land between Facility Services Center and Advanced Disposal. We approved that for 588,000 on August 1st. As things seemed to go from time to time around here, it was probably three, four weeks later, they're asking, actually, could we buy more of the land? Could we take 23 and a half acres that you have there? We looked at it, we had it informally appraised, we talked about it, agreed that that land between our facilities is probably not going to be developed by us or have a useful purpose considering that at some point, 40th Avenue Southeast is gonna be extended through there and it's gonna basically cut our building off from that land anyway. So we went back and forth. We came up with a price of 1,250,000 for the 23.42 acres. And if you approve this, we would close on that sometime between April 13th and June 13th. And then just as a reminder, what we do with those proceeds is we would restrict them. We don't have debt that we have to pay down on that building. That'd be the first obligation. After that, we can put it in operating capital and use it for other facility improvements. We could set it aside and maybe buy some land for an additional school somewhere else within the district at a later time. It would be helpful if you could move this one to action. I know we did talk about this in a closed session on November 14th. The buyer is kind of anxious, obviously, to keep proceeding on the plans. They need to get permits and approvals and things like that.
Motion moved to action.
Second.
Is there any discussion on moving this item to action? Hearing none. All those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the purchase agreement with Scanell Properties LLC in the amount of 1,250,000 dollars for the sale of approximately 23.42 acres located at 3935 Highway 14 East Rochester, Minnesota.
Move approval.
Second.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, John. I know it's been a fairly long process, so I appreciate, we appreciate all of your efforts on.
Thank you.
Bringing this to conclusion. 7.06, approval of combined polling, polling places. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Carlson will also brief us on this item.
Good evening again. Earlier this year, the legislature changed one of the statutes and made it effective July 1st, 2017. Basically, what they changed is if a school district's gonna have an election off-cycle from a normal statewide election day, so say we needed to do a board of director position or we need to go out for a referendum, you need to declare by December 31st the year before if you plan on consolidating any of your precincts. We do that in a couple areas. First, the county has some that they automatically have been combining themselves. So we would need to note those. But in the last operating referendum election, we did combine Pine Island and Orinoco to one facility. And then I'm also recommending that we take the townships of Hyde Park and Zumbro and combine it with the city of Hammond. So basically making one polling spot for our Wabashaw County residents and then adopting the other facilities that the county would also combine within the city of Rochester anyway. As far as I know, we have no intention of bringing anything to an election on an off-schedule day next year outside of a statewide election anyway. But in order to comply, just in case we decide to do something or in case we need to run a special school board director election, I would like you to get this approved. And obviously, since this is our last meeting in December, it'd be nice if we could just move this one to action and get this done, too.
Ms. Seelinger.
So, John, is this something we have to do every year now by statute?
Yes. So, plan for this one coming to you every December now. And probably won't change it unless I see the counties themselves are changing their location.
Ms. Marvin.
John, what's, what's the cost of holding for each polling place?
Ooh.
I mean, there is, there is a cost.
Yes. So what we did in the last election is we offered up like a facility lease fee, maybe a hundred dollars, 150, something like that. A couple sites asked us for more. We kinda had to agree to it because we didn't have another place to go. And then we do pay the election judges a fee from, you know, about 6:45 in the morning till whenever they finish.
So the more.
The more sites we have, the more cost there is. So we could even make this more efficient and condense the whole city of Rochester down to the Edison Building if we wanted.
That would be crowded.
We'd probably make headlines, yes.
And not the kind that we like to see.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Well, to that point, is this mean that somebody living in Rochester School District but has a Pine Island address could have, go to two polling places to cast a vote?
Could they go to?
Would they have to cast, they gotta go vote for an election of, say, a Pine Island City Councilman?
No, because this would be on a day we're doing an election by ourselves, nothing else to vote for that day.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
And these polling places, they were determined by the county?
Yes, these are all off the list of Wabashaw sites and Olmsted County sites already. And then I'm just recommending to follow their direction. With the exception of Wabashaw, condense those into one.
I will tell you, I will, I was very happy when I was reading that very long resolution and thinking, I have to read this whole thing tonight and then seeing it here, which is very much condensed. So thank you, Ms. Becker, for that, or whoever, Mr. Carlson.
Yes, I wrote that so you could just say you're approving the attached.
Like to move this to action?
Second.
Any discussion about moving this item to action? Hearing none. All those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school direct, school district elections not held on a day of a statewide election as attached.
Move approval.
Okay. Did we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7.07, approval of the 2017-2018 budget adjustments as of October 31st, 2017. This is a briefing item.
Yes, Mr. Carlson will also brief us on this item.
All right. Here we are with our first quarter budget revisions. Just a reminder why we do this primarily. It's because things change in our revenue projections as we get into the school year. We have more kids than we thought we had. We might have new federal money that we didn't know we were gonna get through Title I grants. We have new donations, things like that. And then correspondingly, we wanna adjust the expenditure budgets to match in a lot of those areas. As well as, we have a tradition of carrying over unspent funds at sites. And so we allow sites to spend those in the next year, so we just roll those forward into their budget. So let's roll through here. There we go. So kinda how we read these all funds, I'm gonna have basically look the same. So we'll maybe spend a little bit more time on the general fund, then we'll go faster after the general fund. So how we read this is the adopted budget was the first line. So Fund One, the general fund, we thought we would start with a beginning fund balance of 16.2 million, add 219 million of revenues, 219 million dollars of expenditures, and end the year at 16.2 million dollars. As you remember, through budget season, we had a very structurally sound budget, revenues and expenditures matched. Now we have a budget that actually had a starting fund balance of 19.8 million, revenues of 224.6, expenditures of 226.5, and we're projecting ending then at 17.8 million. So you might ask yourself a couple questions. Why are you up 7.4 million dollars in expenditures? And I tried to highlight the three top things there on the slide. Carryover, so that's the unspent dollars we gave sites last year. They had 2.6 million dollars left over. I should clarify, that's not all just our school buildings. There are some departments district-wide we let carry over. So anyway, 2.6 million dollars of unspent funds that you had allocated last year. And we're just saying, go ahead and spend that this year. Sale of Golden Hill, 1.7 million dollars. So we've rolled that into a budget and can be used to, again, make some repairs to buildings, improvements to buildings. We could buy land with that. So we've put that in those expenditure budget. And then new grants or dedicated funds, 2.7 million dollars. So that's the new federal money, new donations, new other types of funding. On the revenue side, again, the 2.7 matches, the sale of Golden Hill matches 1.7. And then because the state formula's improved and changed right as we were setting the budget, that adjusts us up about a million dollars more to work with than what we thought we'd have. The biggest expense, of course, in the general fund are FTEs or full-time equivalent positions. I'm just gonna highlight the two lines that changed the most. First, the teachers. We had 1,448 as we were setting the budget last year. That was last school year, the number of positions we had. We set the budget at 1,422. And within that number, we had 10 kind of floating positions that we had set aside, didn't know where we'd use them or if we'd need them, assumed we would need them. And as of October 31st, we actually have 1,417 teaching positions. So, you know, if you take 10 off the 1,422, we actually had slots for 1,412 people that we were intending to hire right away. And we've added about five since then of the 10. And then the paras, we had 550 in the spring last year. We adjusted the budget down to 533. We are back up to about 550. So just wanted to explain at the bottom there, we started the budget with those 10 FTE of teachers. We haven't reused those all as teaching positions. What we put in about 850,000 dollars, because each teacher's about 85,000 dollars, in the budget to be used as a contingency. We've used up about 3.4 of those FTE. If you adjust paras and make those equivalent at a rate of about .45. So a para costs about .45. So remember, we're up 17 paras. That kind of accounts for how we've used 3.4 of the 10. So we're in good shape. We still have 6.6 positions that are in the budget. We have the dollars for them, but we haven't hired people for them as of October 31st. So that's a nice change from years past. We've been sitting at this meeting and saying, we're up in FTE and now we need to increase the budget because of it, because we didn't have it budgeted. So we're in very good shape. There were some other FTE adjustments where it was, you know, like title funds came in, so we applied and we hired new people and used the title funds, or we got new donations or, probably that's not a good example, but other grants that came in and we hired FTE through that. As well as in our community ed area, our food service area, those are kind of revenue-driven funds. They charge fees for their service. So when they hire more people, it's because they're growing in their fees that they're charging, things like that. So overall, the summary for the general fund, our biggest fund, we ended last year a little bit better than we planned. We're projecting to end this year a little better than we've planned. We think the unassigned fund balance might be around 7.1% instead of 6.9%. That's a two-tenth of a percent improvement. We do have the biggest unknown, and that's salaries and benefits for principals and teachers. We've budgeted for a 3% raise in this year. I don't know how that will sort out yet at this time. And just wanted to note that superintendent and cabinet have been very cautious about using those 10 spare FTE. We have a new electronic approval process. You have to put comments in. And we've been very, very tight this year in trying to maintain the number of FTEs that we're adding to the system. All right. So like I said, we'll go a little faster now. So non-allocated funds, these are all of our grants and donations directly to school sites. We let them spend whatever they've carried over from the last year and whatever they've brought in for the new year. Currently, 1.1 million dollars are on the books for them to spend this year. Food service. Didn't make a lot of changes here, other than receive the fresh fruits and vegetables grant, as well as we adjusted some of our food costs based on the trends that we're seeing. So the budget's about the same as what it was. Community ed, again, we received some new grants that were not included in the budget, so we increased our revenues and we increased our expenditures. In our debt service fund, again, we made a very small little change there to our estimated revenue. And again, just wanted to note that the reason the expenditures look higher than revenues is because we're paying off a debt on February 1st. Then when that's gone, it's off the books.
Which debt?
That one is refinancing of, don't remember which school it was, but we did it back in 2015. And the money's just been sitting in a savings account earning interest to match when we could pay it off on February 1st, 2018. Construction fund, we have 22 million dollars of expenditures because we've added in the Hoover Project, plus all of the unspent money we had left over from Churchill, Elton Hills, Pinewood, Lincoln, Mighty Oaks and Mayo projects. Work comp, we really didn't make any significant changes here. I just noted in there that at some point, you know, we have 1.1 million dollars potentially in the fund balance there. We can transfer that back to the general fund to help out the general fund. The dental trust, again, no real changes. We're projecting basically to end even in that fund. Our health fund, one thing we do need to adjust here, we're just finishing up the open enrollment process, so we now know how many people selected which plan. And we need to update our revenues because we increased premiums. So we'll get that done on the next cycle here. Paper Tiger, we did increase and we, instead of going with the hourly-based and using a lot of overtime, we just added an extra halftime FTE to keep three full-time positions there. And then in OPEB, this is where we're saving for our health insurance of our retirees so that we've got money set aside for the future when they retire and then we can help subsidize those costs. We have a 19 million dollar long-term liability. We have, we're projecting to have 9.3 million dollars set aside at the end of the year. So just thought that was pretty impressive to note that we've actually set aside 50% of our long-term liability in just two and a half years. We've had incredible growth just through the stock markets being up really nice in the last year. And that's what I had for you.
Any questions, board members?
I, I, oh, sorry. I have, I have one question. So in, looking at the more detailed sheet, in Fund 07, the debt service fund?
Yes.
Is that where the one and a quarter million dollars from the sale of the excess land would go?
No, we do not have to put that there since we don't have any debt on, on that building.
On that building, okay.
So we will actually put it in Fund One and put it in a restricted fund balance.
Okay.
Fund One.
Thank you.
Same as how we handled Gage East and Golden Hill sales.
This isn't going to change. Make a motion to move this to action.
Second. Second.
I lost my brain. I'm going to remove this. Any discussion about moving this item to action? Thank you, I'm on a roll now. Hearing none, all in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approved the 2017-2018 budget adjustments through October 31st, 2017 as presented.
Move approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? It's been moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7.8, 7.08, five-year general fund financial forecast, this is an information item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Carlson will brief, not brief us, but will provide this information for us.
That's right, I got one more PowerPoint of a few more numbers, and then we can be out of here.
It was just getting good, too.
Dr. Marvin has lots of questions on this one, so we'll be here for a while.
Okay, hopefully it appears on the screen here in just a second.
I lost my...
Perfect. All right, so the five-year general fund forecast, we do this twice per year, we threw in an extra one for free in September, just to kind of help set and guide the levy process, but this is our December one where we're trying to adjust for enrollment changes in the fall, adjust any other things that needed to be fixed from the last time we did this, as well as adopting, includes now those budget revisions you just approved one and a half minutes ago. So revenue assumptions that we have built in here, state legislature will continue per pupil funding increases by 2% each year. That's a little bit risky, but that is what they have increased our funding the last four years in a row, so we are going with that for right now. Again, I have a little bit of anxiety about that just because that's our biggest funding source, and with state surpluses turn into state deficits, it's going to be a hard fight to make sure that 2% keeps happening every year. Voter-approved referendum of $870 will stay on the books through school year '26. Local optional revenue of $424 per pupil unit will continue to take that, and then the school board-approved referendum of $166 will continue to take that. And then we try to match out any of the other restricted funding, like grants and donations, to cover the expenditures that go with them. On the expenditure side, we're changing course just a little bit here in how we project salaries and benefits, this has been some feedback I've been hearing for a couple of years, but we've been using 3% assumed raises for every employee year over year over year. We're going to do that through the '19 school year so that we, that includes the school year and next school year, and then after that, we're going to project 2% growth in salaries and benefits from there. And we have worked in 10 new FTE of teachers in the '18-'19 budget, but we don't know exactly where those are going to go. Those would assume to probably be in growth of kids, section numbers, special ed, IEP, students identified, and so on and so forth. Contracted services, we'll continue to increase those at 2.5% is our assumption, transportation at 3%, supplies and capital 2.5%, utilities, we did just see that RPU is going to do a 1.5% electric increase, so we used that, and then we had previously known they are doing 6% on water for the foreseeable future, so we used that number. So as the numbers play out now, assuming the 2% growth in revenue and we drop down on the expenditure side more to a 2% growth, we look fine. We can make it out to 21, 22 with staying above 6% on our fund balance. Now, the risk there is, is that really realistic? On the revenue side, are we going to achieve 2% growth, and on the expenditure side, are we going to maintain to only 2% growth? How many, you know, new operating costs will come on board with new positions that are needed to serve, you know, a growing student base? So those are all risks that we have to be aware of. But just on the face, around the surface, it looks okay, especially through that '20 school year, which is what we really said in 2015, that was the goal. We did not want to have to go back and ask for any new funding before the end of the '20 school year. So key points, say it one more time, 2% growth on state aid is a little risky if state surpluses go to state deficits, we don't have any more authority to raise money on our own, we have to go to the voters if we need more after that. We've adjusted down pay increases to 2% annually, again, that's a negotiated process and that may not be realized. And then in '18-'19, we've assumed the growth of 10 more teachers into the budget, but for right now, we have not projected any growth beyond that, so that's another risk there that we need to know about. So there you go, that's the high-level forecast for the next five years.
Just a quick question, you're not projecting additional FTEs after...
After the '18-'19 school year, correct.
But we are projecting we're going to have additional students.
Correct, that's a known flaw in our assumptions. Part of the reason we are okay with that known flaw temporally is because we are working on redoing our staffing patterns and coming to consensus on what is the standardized staffing formula. We haven't had a very good or standardized formula over the last couple of years. It's been potentially different at different buildings, and so we're trying to get that settled on. And once we have that and figure out how we're allocating our '18-'19 budget, then we'll start projecting a little bit of growth from there based on the number of students. So I expect that that'll get fixed the next time we come to you by June, we'll say, yeah, we're projecting this many FTE in this year, this year, this year.
Any other questions, board members? Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Thank you very much for your work on this and to you and your team of putting together something that we can understand.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
This meeting is adjourned at 9:45 PM.